Well, now come the order, Madam Clerk, please call the row.
Alderman Tyus. Alderman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderman Hubbard. Alderman Iglesias. Alderman Koltar. Alderman Rice. Alderman Gunther. Alderman Volmer. Alderman Morton. Alderman Ornowitz. Alderman Murphy. Alderman Howard. Alderman Green. Alderman Oldenburg. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Todd. Alderman Davis. Alderman Spencer. Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vaquero. Alderman Norrion. Alderman Con. Alderman Clark Hubbard. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Navarro. President Reed. Alderman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderman Iglesias. Alderman Koltar. Alderman Rice. Alderman Morton. Alderman Ornowitz. Alderman Howard. Alderman Green. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Davis. Alderman Spencer. Alderman Vaquero. Alderman Con. Alderman Boyd. Eighteen present.
Coram being present, we will be led today in prayer by Pastor John Watson Jr. of Maple Temple. We're gonna have a moment of silence for Captain Mary Wannicki upon the loss of her son Luke Wannicki. We'll quote from the Holy Scriptures. Unto us a child is born. To us a son is given, the government will be on his shoulders. He will be called Wonderful Counselor, Mighty God, Everlasting Father, Prince of Peace. Gracious God Heavenly Father, in these days leading up to Christmas, help us as a community to focus on the good news that has caused great joy around the world and across the ages. We are in awe that the coming of the Lord Jesus has shaped the history of the world and has changed untold millions. We rejoice in the proclamation of Emmanuel, God with us. As a wonderful counselor, we acknowledge that your wisdom has kept our decisions and discussions on the path of truth and justice. As a mighty God, your strength has been with us to give us courage to stand in the face of adversity. As everlasting Father, you have protected us and provided what we have needed. Now, as the Prince of Peace, we ask that you will look on our city officials and workers. They'll break for the holiday. Allow their homes and families to experience the peace that pass understanding, that will reinvigorate them to continue to serve our great city. Into your arms we commit ourselves, our community, our family. Amen. Before we begin this meeting, since this is our last meeting, I ask everybody if you all can join me in a moment of silence for the 188 people that we've lost today this year in our city. It's been a very tough year. A lot of young people shot and killed all through our city, and I want to thank each and every member of the board for doing everything you can within your wards and on this floor to usher on some change. So join me in a moment of silence and also prayer for the loved ones and the family members that are still dealing with those losses. Thank you. Dispense with line item three, introduction of honored guests. Any introduction of honored guests? Any introduction of honored guests? Alderman from 12th.
Mr. President, Members of Board, I'd like to have as my honored guest today David Sweeney, farmer clerk at the Board and now works for Lewis and Rice Law Firm. Nathan Lett and Demetrius Alfred from Local 73, and also Jeff Hines from the Carpenters Union and Fred Cersey Jr. from Plumbers and Pipe Fitters.
Any further introductions? Any further introductions? Any further inductions? Join me and welcome in Alderman Moore back. Good to see you, Alderman. Any further introductions? Any further inductions? Alderman from the 10th. Would you like to wrap us up?
Thank you, Mr. President, Members of Board. Today is Friday the 13th, so I make a motion to adjourn before anything bad happens here.
Please don't do it. It's a non-debatable motion.
Not gonna happen, huh?
I'm not accepting it.
Can't knock a guy for trying, can you? Today is National Ice Cream Day. More importantly, on this day in 1977, the movie Saturday Night Fever was released. Little known fact, the Alderman from the 23rd played a vital part in that movie. He was the fever.
Approval of the Minutes.
Approval of the Minutes, December 6, 2019.
Alderman from the 22nd, you recognize on the motion for approval of the Minutes.
Good morning, Mr. President, Members of Board. I move to approve the Minutes dated December 6, 2019.
Move by Alderman from 22nd, second by Alderman from 12th. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Pose. Motion carries. Report to city officials.
Reporter city officials can be found in A, B, and C of the agenda and has been placed in the Alderman's mailboxes. Dear Members of the Board, I have the pleasure to submit the following individuals for reappointment to the Developmental Disabilities Resources Board. The reappointment of Ms. Dion Flowers, an at-large member who resides in the 2nd Ward and whose term will expire October 1, 2022. The reappointment of Mr. Michael Garvin, an at-large member who resides in the 13th Ward, whose term will expire on October 1, 2021. The reappointment of Mr. David Weber, an at-large member who resides in the 28th Ward, whose term will expire October 1, 2022. I respectfully request your approval of the appointments. Sincerely, Lyda Cruz, Mayor.
Alderman from 13th, you recognize on the mayor's appointment to the Developmental Disabilities Resource Board.
President, Members of the Board, I ask for your approval of the mayor's appointments to the Developmental Disabilities Resource Board.
Move by Alderman from 13th, entertain the second on that motion. Second by Alderman from 28th, Alderman from the first.
I'd like to request separation of Mr. Michael Garvin from the rest of them, so I can vote not no, but hell no.
All right. Alderman from the 13th, would you like to restate your motion with just the two and then take up a separate motion on Mr. Garvin?
I guess I do, sir.
So there's been a request to divide the question, so on the first one, we'll be taking up Alderman Flowers and David Weber.
I move that we reappoint Dion Flowers and David Weber to the Developmental Disabilities Resource Board.
It's been moved by Alderman from 13th, entertain the second on that motion. Second by Alderman from 23rd, any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Pose. Motion carries. And on the next question.
I move that we reappoint Mr. Michael Garvin to the Developmental Disabilities Resource Board.
It's been moved by Alderman from the 13th. Second by Alderman from the 16th. Any discussion? Alderman from the first.
President, Members of the Board, I ask for a division of the question, so that I could speak to Mr. Michael Garvin and his lack of character. We have a gas station at St. Louis Avenue and Kings Highway that we had laws that said should not be there. Michael Garvin, instead of defending our ordinances as he is supposed to do as one of the members of our city councilor, has pushed unethically to me to be able to have that gas station open when we had all kind of things that said it shouldn't be there. He worked with the Board of Adjustment and people like that who don't live in our community. We're having shootings and killings at that corner. We had that corner quiet. They let it stay open to 3 or 4 o'clock in the morning. They have liquor when they're not supposed to. This is all coming from our city councilor. Our city councilor's office is supposed to represent not only us, because the first thing it says in our charter is that they represent the Board of Aldermen before the mayor, the mayor appoints, but they represent us, they represent all the other members, and they also represent our ordinance. Once our ordinance is a law, the city councilor is not supposed to be doing what the former mayor, which was Francis Laye, said, was to somehow push this through illegally. He's supposed to stand up and say, no, our ordinance is law, and he's supposed to defend that ordinance. He did not do that. I know he's out there in the airport working undercover with all the stuff that's going on there. I find him to be a very unethical and unreasonable person, and I don't believe he should be in the city councilor's office. I know when he came and left, and he's back here again, and he shouldn't be on any board. And I want to make sure that anything that they try to appoint him to, I will be up speaking against Michael Garvin and the way he does. All the people who are worried about the underhand in this at the airport, that's Michael Garvin's fingerprints that's on that. And we gotta be very careful about putting him on anything. So I want to roll call vote, so that I can make it very clear, he shouldn't be a city councilor, much less on anything that has to do with developmentally disabled or any such thing.
Any further discussion? Alderman from the 23rd.
A question, because I'm equally not that fine to Michael Garvin. But is it 15 votes or a majority of the people in the room?
This would be just the majority.
Okay, I just was curious.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderman from 13th, you recognize to close.
I renew my motion.
It's been moved by Alderman from 13th, second by Alderman from the 16th, that we reappoint Michael Garvin to the Developmental Disability Resources Board as per the mayor's request. And there's been a request for roll call. Madam Clerk, please call the row.
Alderman Tyus. Alderman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderman Hubbard. Alderman Iglesias. Alderman Koltar. Alderman Rice. Alderman Gunther. Alderman Volmer. Alderman Morton. Alderman Ornowitz. Alderman Murphy. Alderman Howard. Alderman Green. Alderman Oldenburg. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Todd. Alderman Davis. Alderman Spencer. Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vaquero. Alderman Norrion. Alderman Con. Alderman Clark Hubbard. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Navarro. President Reed. Alderman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Hubbard. Alderman Iglesias. Alderman Rice. Alderman Morton. Alderman Howard. Alderman Davis. Alderman, I'm sorry, Alderman Con. Alderman Boyd. 13 aye votes, 8 no votes, and 1 present.
By vote, you stay in the motion of the Alderman from 13th and reappointed Michael Garvin to the Developmental Disabilities Resource Board. Please state your point of order. We've already passed the other two. We've adopted the other two, and Michael Garvin was the last one. Alderman from the first requested a division of the question, so we split it up and did the first two, the first round. It was before you, right before you walked in. Please proceed, Madam Clerk.
Dear Members of the Board, I have the pleasure to submit the following individuals for appointment and reappointment to the Mental Health Board of Trustees. The appointment of Dr. Julia Lopez. The appointment of Mr. Yusuf Skagglins. The appointment of Sandra Pinkston. The reappointment of Coral Rose. The reappointment of Caroline Jackson. The reappointment of Darryl Hudson. The reappointment of David LaSlo. The reappointment of Donna Schmidt. The reappointment of Linda Grayson. The reappointment of Marguerite Grandilias. The reappointment of Mary Lou Calzareta. The reappointment of Nina North Murphy. The reappointment of Philip Menden. The reappointment of Robert Poirier. The reappointment of Terrell Quarter. I respectfully request your approval of these appointments. Sincerely, Lyda Cruz, Mayor.
Alderman from the 26th, you recognize on the mayor's appointment to the Mental Health Board of Trustees.
Mr. President, Members of the Board, I move for their approval to submit the following individuals for appointment and reappointment to the Mental Health Board of Trustees.
It's been moved by Alderman from the 22nd, second by Alderman from the 22nd. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries.
Dear Members of the Board, I have the pleasure to submit the following individuals for appointment to the Convention and Visitors Commission. The appointment of Mr. Keith Robinson, an at-large member, whose term will expire November 22, 2021. The appointment of Mr. Charles Downs, a restaurant owner, whose term will expire November 22, 2022. I respectfully request your approval of the appointments. Sincerely, Lyda Cruz, Mayor.
Alderman from the 7th, you recognize on the mayor's appointment to the Convention and Visitors Commission.
Thank you, Mr. President, Members of the Board. I move to approve the mayor's appointment to the CBC.
It's been moved by Alderman from the 7th, entertain the second on that motion. Second by Alderman from the 12th, any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Pose. Motion carries. We'll dispense with line item 7. Would anyone like to take any board, any board bills or resolutions from any of our informal accountants? Alderman from the 21st.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to take off Board Bill 107 and Board Bill 120 off my formal calendar.
Madam Clerk, please make note of that. Place Board Bill 107 and 120 for substitute at the end of our regular perfection calendar.
So noted.
Would anyone like to take any further bills or resolutions off any of our informal accountants? We would dispense with line items 8 through 10. First reading of board bills.
Board Bill 182, sponsored by Alderman Iglesias and Alderman Koltar. An ordinance approving a redevelopment plan dated November 19, 2029, for the Lassasong Scattered Sites area. Board Bill 183, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey. An ordinance approving a redevelopment plan dated November 19, 2019, for the 4,500 through 4,540 Swan Avenue and 1305 through 1305 Rear South Taylor Avenue. Board Bill 184, the number was not used this session. Board Bill 185, sponsored by Alderman Koltar. An ordinance approving a redevelopment plan dated November 19, 2019, for the 618 through 24 and 700 through 702 North Second Street area. Board Bill 186, sponsored by Alderman Clark Hubbard. An ordinance authorizing and directing the Fire Commissioner to enter into and execute a grant agreement with U.S. Department of Homeland Security, Federal Emergency Management Agency through the Missouri Department of Homeland Security for the purpose of funding to support the cybersecurity coordinator position at the St. Louis Fusion Center and to expend funds by entering into contracts or otherwise for grant purposes and containing an emergency clause. That is the extent of first reading of board bills.
Reference to committee.
To the HUD's Committee, Board Bill 182, 183, and 185 to Public Safety, Board Bill 186. That is the extent of reference to committee.
Second reading.
The following board bills were reported out of Neighborhood Development with a due pass recommendation. Board Bill 63, sponsored by Alderman Iglesias. An ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for 2612 and Avenue area. Board Bill 87, sponsored by Alderman Norrion. An ordinance approving a blighting study and redevelopment plan for 7202 through 7220 Arsenal Avenue redevelopment area. Board Bill 122, sponsored by Alderman Volmer. An ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for the 5223 Botanical Avenue area. Board Bill 125, sponsored by Alderman Moore. An ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for the Evans Avenue, North Newstead, Pendleton Avenue Scattered Sites redevelopment area. Board Bill 142, sponsored by Alderman Iglesias. An ordinance approving a blighting study and redevelopment plan for 2633 through 35 Allen Avenue redevelopment area. Board Bill 163, sponsored by Alderman Hubbard. An ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for 2127 North 11th Street area. Board Bill 166, sponsored by Alderman Spencer. An ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for 3,400 Chippewa and 3,809 Louisiana Avenue area. Board Bill 167, sponsored by Alderman Spencer. An ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for 3,426 South Compton Avenue area. The following board bills were reported out of HUD's Committee with a due pass recommendation. Board Bill 88, Committee sub as amended, sponsored by Alderman Morton, President Reed, and the following all the persons. Rice, Ornowitz, Pam Boyd, Murphy, Howard, Norrion, Spencer, Iglesias, Jeffrey Boyd, Gunther, Vaquero, and Koltar. An ordinance repealing ordinance 69427, approved February 21, 2013, and pertaining to city public works contract tax increment finance projects and St. Louis bonded projects and workforce diversity and establishing apprenticeship training, construction workforce development, and a community jobs board, and in lieu thereof establishing a new ordinance pertaining to the same and containing severability clause and an effective date. Board Bill 143, sponsored by Alderman Todd. An ordinance amending the redevelopment plan for the Washington-Vander-Vaner-Inwright-Pendleton redevelopment area. Board Bill 145, sponsored by Alderman Todd. An ordinance amending the redevelopment plan for the Vander-Vaner-Finney-Washington-Taylor redevelopment area. Approved by ordinance 69410 dated February 21, 2013, by extending the implementation schedule, not calling for projects to be completed May 1, 2029. Board Bill 156, sponsored by Alderman Hubbard. An ordinance recommended by the Board of Estment and Apportionment, authorizing the City of St. Louis, Missouri to issue its taxable industrial development revenue bonds in one or more series in a total principal amount of not exceed $50 million, authorizing and directing the mayor and the comptroller to execute certain documents related thereto and authorizing and directing the taking of other actions and approval of execution of other documents or is necessary or desirable to carry out and comply with the intent hereof. Board Bill 164, sponsored by Alderman. Rhodey, an ordinance dissolving the Special Allocations Fund for Lafayette Square Historic District and the 5,700 block of Arsenal, terminating the designation of a portion of the City of St. Louis, Missouri as redevelopment area and authorizing certain actions relating thereto. Board Bill 165, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey. An ordinance dissolving the Special Allocations Fund for the Hadley Dean Building Redevelopment Area and terminating the designation of certain respective portions of the City of St. Louis, Missouri relating to the redevelopment area and authorizing certain actions relating thereto. Board Bill 178, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey. An ordinance determining that the tax increment financing plans listed in Exhibia are making satisfactory progress under the proposed time schedule for the completion of projects herein. The following board bills were reported out of Transportation and Commerce with a due pass recommendation. Board Bill 149, sponsored by Alderman Davis. An ordinance recommended and approved by the Board of Estment and Apportionment, authorizing and directing the Director of Airports and the Comptroller of the City of St. Louis to enter into and execute on behalf of the city the First Amendment to Automated Teller Machine Concession Agreement, AL 361, between the city and the Bank of America, in a containing a severability clause and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 176, sponsored by Alderman Davis. An ordinance recommended by the Board of Estment and Apportionment, authorizing and directing the Director of the Airports and the Comptroller of the City of St. Louis to enter into and execute on behalf of the city the Third Amendment to Fuel System Lease and Use Agreement, AL 442, to the St. Louis-Lambre International Airport Fuel System, containing a severability clause and an emergency clause. That is the extent of second reading. Report of standing committees.
Please join me in welcoming Missionary Rosie Love of Maple Temple Church of God in Christ. She's attended the meeting today with our very own John Watson Jr. So Missionary Rosie Love, could you please stand? Let's give her a round of applause and thank her for attending today's meeting. Dispense with line item 14, perfection consent.
Board Bill 132, sponsored by Alderman Hubbard. Pursuant to ordinance 68937, an ordinance authorizing the honorary street name Carly Claus Way, which shall begin at the intersection of Washington Avenue and North 16th Street and run east on Washington Avenue to the intersection of Washington Avenue and North 15th Street. Board Bill 136, sponsored by Alderman Boyd. An ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Services to the City of St. Louis, establishing multiple public works and improvement projects within the City of St. Louis. Board Bill 137, sponsored by Alderman Middlebrook. An ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Services to vacate public service rights for the vehicle, equestrian, and pedestrian travel on Frederick Street in conformity with Section 14 of Article 21 of the Charter and imposing certain conditions on such vacation. Board Bill 139, sponsored by Alderman Gunther. An ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Services to conditionally vacate above-surface, surface, and subsurface rights for vehicle, equestrian, and pedestrian travel in easternmost 5-foot of Missouri Avenue from Cherokee as bounded by Cherokee, Missouri, Potomac, and Jefferson in conformity with Section 14 of Article 21 of the Charter and imposing certain conditions on such vacation. Board Bill 153, sponsored by Alderman Clark Hubbard. Pursuant to ordinance 68937, an ordinance authorizing the honorary street name Malik and Debora Ahmad Way, which shall begin at the intersection of Simple Avenue and Page Boulevard and northeast on Page Boulevard to the intersection of Arlington Avenue and Page Boulevard. That is the extent of perfection consent calendar.
Alderman from the 22nd, you recognize on the motion for the perfection consent calendar.
Mr. President, Members of Board, I move to adopt the perfection consent calendar.
Move by Alderman from 22nd, second by Alderman from 10th. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Pose. Motion carries. Board bills for perfection.
Board Bill 89, Committee sub, sponsored by Alderman Boyd. An ordinance adopting the 2018 International Swimming Pool and Spa Code with amendments and containing a penalty clause, severability clause, savings clause, and an emergency clause.
Alderman from the 22nd, you recognize on first, excuse me, perfection of Board Bill 89 Committee substitute.
Mr. President, Members of Board, I move for perfection of Board Bill 89 Committee substitute.
Move by Alderman from 22nd, second by Alderman from 10th. Any discussion? Alderman from the 22nd, you recognize, close.
Mr. President, I renew my motion.
It's been moved in the second that we perfect Board Bill 89 Committee substitute. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries.
Board Bill 172, sponsored by Alderman Boyd, Alderman Mohammed, Alderman Vaquero, Alderman Hubbard, and Alderman Clark Hubbard. An ordinance relating to the unlawful possession of a handgun by a minor to be added to the revised code of the City of St. Louis as Charter 15.130.
Alderman from the 22nd, you recognize on the perfection of Board Bill 172. Alderman from the 22nd, you recognize on the perfection of Board Bill 172.
Mr. President, members of the board, I move for perfection of Board Bill 172.
It's been moved by Alderman from the 22nd and entertain a second seconded by Alderman from the 23rd, any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President, Board Bill 172 is basically some common sense gun legislation. As we all know, in the state of Missouri, we have basically a permitless carry state. So almost anybody can carry a handgun in the state of Missouri as long as they meet certain requirements. I am troubled, and I'm sure most of my colleagues and citizens and citizens are troubled, when we see young people with handguns, peoples under the age of 18. Currently, the state law makes provisions for anybody over the age of 18 to be in possession of a handgun, but it's.
Alderman from the 22nd with the buzz, can I ask you to go to the mic right next area? Thank you. We'll have to have City TV work on your mic. I don't know if it's the beard. Please proceed, Alderman.
Now I forgot what I was saying. Must be the beard. No, the state of Missouri law makes provisions for anyone 18 years and older basically in possession of a handgun. However, it is silent on juveniles. It actually says nothing. There's nothing in there to do when a juvenile is found in possession of a handgun. Some of these shootings that occurred in the City of St. Louis sadly enough have occurred with juveniles being in possession of handguns. I think the more opportunities that we can take to remove opportunities for young people being in possession of handguns, the safer the City of St. Louis will be. Now, would this all of a sudden make the City of St. Louis safe? Absolutely not, but it's another tool in the toolbox for the Police Department to be able to have probable cause to take the gun away from a juvenile with a consequence. Currently, there are no consequences, which makes no sense, but there needs to be consequences. We need to be diligent as we deal with all our citizens with handguns, but more specifically, dealing with juveniles is very important. Young people oftentimes think they're invincible almost, and from talking to young people in my community and just relatives, some young people are carrying handguns because they can and for protection on a what if. It's, well, in case something happens, I want to make sure I can protect myself. And a lot of people say that, you know? I'm not a big handgun, a gun type person. Many people have been killed with their own gun. Someone took it away from them. Of course, I had a nephew shot and killed. I'm real sensitive as it relates to guns, and this is again just another step, and I certainly would appreciate, you know, the sort of my colleagues on this simple piece of gun legislation.
All right, thank you. Alderman from the 12th.
I'm not up for questions, I'm just stretching my legs.
All the woman from the six.
Thank you, Mr. President. Can I please be added as a cosponsor?
Madam Clerk, please make note of that. Add Alderman from the six as co-sponsor. Alderman from the 28th, would you like to be added?
Yes, I would also like to be added as a cosponsor.
Alderman from the 28th, Alderman from the 20th.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Alderman from the 24th.
Would the Alderman from the 22nd yield for a question?
Alderman from the 22nd, will you yield for questions to Alderman?
I will.
Please proceed, Alderman.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you. Are you familiar with, you said that Missouri legislation, Missouri state legislation was silent as to minors on this. Are you familiar with any other jurisdiction that's that's done similar to what what you're trying to do here with this bill?
Sure, thank you. Actually, I would like to suggest and say the City of St. Louis is on the cutting edge, and we're the first one to do this. However, we're not. Actually, Kansas City has already passed this legislation. Springfield is working on passing the legislation identical as well as the City of Columbia. What's phenomenal is all the mayors of those towns gotten has gotten together and looking at different strategies to deal with gun violence in our communities, and this was a basically a solution that came out of their particular meetings with the governor. And my understanding is the governor is in support of this as well.
Thank you so much. I have nothing further.
All right, any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderman from the 22nd, you recognize the close.
Mr. President, I'd like to move to adopt this in bank.
It's Alderman from the 22nd would like to pass this bill, perfect this bill in bank has been moved by Alderman from the 22nd, seconded by Alderman from the 23rd. Are there any objections?
Objection.
There's been an, there's been an, there's been an objection to the in bank motion. So if anyone would like to have their name added, please notify the clerk, or if you want to stand up now, we can tell the clerks. Alderman from the first, 15th, 7th, and the 16th, please add them to the bill along with Alderman from the 23rd, and the Alderman and Alderman from the 9th also, and the Alderman from the 19th and the 4th. Going once, going twice. All right, it's been moved by Alderman from the 22nd and seconded by Alderman from the 23rd that we perfect Board Bill 172. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries.
Board Bill 107 sponsored by Alderman Mohammed, Alderman Tyus, Alderman Vaquero, and Alderman Todd, an ordinance directing the City of St. Louis Division of the Police to establish nine police districts, the boundaries of which shall be drawn in accordance with the map set forth in Exhibit A attached heretofore and to the extent the Commissioner of the City of St. Louis Police Division, Division of Police deems reasonable and appropriate in the light of changing community and law enforcement needs, Division of Police resources including officers shall be apportioned equally amongst the nine police districts and each police district.
Alderman from the 21st, you recognize on the perfection of Board Bill 107.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the perfection of Board Bill 107.
Been moved by Alderman from the 21st and entertain a second on that motion, seconded by Alderman from the 19th and Alderman from the first. Please proceed, Alderman.
Mr. President, I move to pass Board Bill 107.
We are, we're good right now because you made that perfection. So just now you could just talk about it, but I'm also going to ask the clerk to add my name to your bill.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have nothing to really discuss about Board Bill 107. I will entertain questions from my colleagues if there are any.
Alderman from the 16th.
Of course.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Would the Alderman from the 21st yield for questions, please?
Alderman from the 21st will yield for questions to the Alderman from the 16th.
Yes.
Please proceed, Alderman from the 16th.
Alderman, can you give a summation of conversations you may have had at the highest commands of the Police Department? Are they in favor of this board bill, the mayor's office? As you know, local control is, I think, still still relevant today. So, you know, the Police Department really flows through the chief, commissioner, chief slash commissioner, and or the mayor's office. So I'm just wondering and curious if there's been any conversations at those level that you could enlighten me on, please?
Absolutely. Alderman, I have met with the Police Commissioner as well as our Director of Public Safety, and I've talked with different captains throughout the district in regards to Board Bill 107. I've also discussed this with the Police Union under the leadership of Jeff Roder, and I've discussed this with the Ethical Society as well. Are they in favor? No. They're not the legislative branch of government. They don't write laws. If they want to write the laws or dictate how I write a law, then they should run for the Board of Alderman. Are they in favor? Absolutely not. The, in fact, the Commissioner came and testified at that committee on public safety. He came to testify, and he asked for time to develop data, which he has not gone back to me yet. The Director of Public Safety asked me as well to hold this board bill, which I did do out of courtesy. I held this board bill for literally the entire session, and there has been no data, there has been no improvement, police response time is still terrible, police presence is still terrible, and they do not have a real plan to strategically revamp the Police Department. There is no plan, no strategy. So I feel that this bill, board bill is timely.
Sure. I don't, I don't think I disagree that it warrants an evaluation. You mentioned that there was a lack of data or response from from those folks that you sought out to get said data. Do you have any data of your own that suggests that, and it may be very well the truth, that the prior districting was better and that response time is better under those prior geographies than they are now? I'm just curious if you have any of that data or you could suggest, because I think you might be onto something. What I question and warn against is sort of impulsive legislation where we haven't had a full discussion of the data and that we've given folks enough time to evaluate and bring forth that data as opposed to a couple or three weeks. It does take time to 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 evaluate a full set of data, because I want to make an informed decision on this. And Alderman, I think I agree. I like that you're pushing this, and it warrants a discussion, making sure we're allocating resources appropriately within the St. Louis Police Department. I just suggest we talk to the St. Louis Police Department before we do so.
Did you ask a question or was you giving a comment? Because I didn't hear a question.
Sure. The question is, do you have any data of your own that suggests that going increasing the districts within the St. Louis city is better as opposed to where we were under last districts?
Absolutely. Alderman, if you look at crime reports from the previous years dating back to 2012 before we changed police districts, when we decreased our districts from nine to six, police response time was better, police presence was better, and there was less crime in what today is high crime neighborhoods. So that data is still prevalent and still exists. It is still there on a Police Department's website.
So you're representing today that that response time was quicker under the old districting than it is today?
Yes.
Okay. Do you know, was was the impetus of the police redistricting? Do you know why that even took place?
Absolutely. It started under Merslay and at that time Police Commissioner Sam Doxson. And he decided that he wanted to equally distribute police resources based on the amount of calls that were coming in, which were terrible. Now, people from the 16th Ward can call a thousand times about someone dropping trash on the ground. And I'm, I'm just giving an example, not saying this is the case. People from the 16th Ward could call about someone dropping trash on the ground, they can call a hundred times. Someone from the first ward or 21st Ward can call, and someone's getting shot, and there's only one phone call. So it's unequal distribution here, and that's why he changed. And this is something that the Director of Public Safety acknowledged was wrong and something that the Police Commissioner acknowledged was wrong. And even at the time of his resignation, Police Commissioner Sam Doxson, he acknowledged that this was wrong, and this was not the right way to go.
It was, I think if I heard you correctly, and I believe it to be right, that calls for service were was the driving data metric rather than actual crime. So yes, I think we should district and allocate resources according to where actual crime is having rather than just calls for service, I believe was your answer, and I agree wholeheartedly with that, and I appreciate you digging into that. I would, I would just like at the end of the day to feel really comfortable that that police leadership has embraced this and that they they aren't set up to fail with a redistrict. Because what I recall, and I think redistricting was a mistake, I'm going to admit that to you, what I recall, I think we're, I think we're feeling the consequences of that today. As a result, there was basically, you had local control merging with redistricting all around the same time, and I think what you had is basically the Police Department came to a year standstill in being able to bring on officers because of local control, and then also the effort that it takes to redraw new lines. So I have some reservations and concern that if we impulsively go through this without thinking and working and working very closely with in a respectful way with police leadership, we could fall into some of those same problems. We're already having problems catching up because of that year standstill, and I would just like to avoid that, Alderman, and I just ask if you've thought of, thought through that at all.
I appreciate your concern, Alderman, and I understand it. However, again, this board bill has set on the informal calendar for literally all of this session. The Police Chief had every opportunity to address this to me as well as the Director of Public Safety. They refused to. We had one meeting, and that was it. In my community and many other communities cannot afford to let board bills that has good intentions, and that will actually make a difference to set on the informal calendar because of bureaucracy. Now, in this board bill, it allocates that the police, and it's the Police Division, which is the appropriate name, the Police Division has 180 days to come up with non-police districts. So in 180 days, if we have some real data, then I will happily repeal this, and we can work something out, but until then, I think we need to move this board bill ahead.
Sure.
But I do appreciate your concern.
Yeah, no, and I, what I would say is I think I plan to support this because in some cases, you know, action is needed to make sure that we're deploying resources appropriately, and I have no further questions at this time. Thank you, Alderman.
Thank you, Alderman.
Any further discussion? Alderman from the 23rd.
Yeah, more just a statement. I can tell you that the people in the 23rd Ward that have looked at this agree with it. They feel that response time's been horrible, and this is more of a statement, but when they did this, the same garbage they sold us on local control about all the money we're going to save, we need less captains, less chiefs, less, instead we got more. And we have actually more captains than we have districts right now. This was sold us as a big money savings cost saving thing, and it hasn't been. And the response time in my area and the crime in the 23rd Ward has gone up. Seeing a police car drive around in the 23rd Ward, I mean, I don't even know if people know what they look like. We see them so little. So I believe going back to the nine districts, and I, I've been working with Alderman Mohammed on this, and the inability for the upper echelon, the chief and them, to come and even want to talk about this, all they want to do is, well, we'll talk later, we'll talk later. I think all this does, it says you got 180 days. Alderman Mohammed's already said he's willing to appeal it, but sometimes you got to do something just to kind of push to get them to actually start the negotiations, to start talking. If we sit around and do nothing, six months, six years from now, we'll still be having the same discussion. This bill does nothing more than basically give them a timeline to get them started, and I think that's a generous timeline.
All right, thank you. Alderman from the 25th.
Thank you, Alderman.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, I, I was supportive of the reduction of the police districts. For a fact, as my colleague from the 23rd Ward had mentioned, that it was sold to us as that we would have some cost savings in the department, that we would be able to reshuffle some resources from white shirts to blue shirts to be able to put more resources on our street. That clearly has not happened. That absolutely categorically has not happened. We actually ended up creating a new white shirt role within the department, the majors. We now have more majors than I think we did before, we had eliminated the role previously. You know, we have more captains than we did before. We always had more captains than districts because there's captains over particular units. So that was, you know, when it was sold to us, it wasn't that we were going to have fewer captains, you know, as a result of that, but we were going to have, I believe, three less captains in the rank of captain, and that did not happen. You know, I personally had contention with the map when it was drawn to create the six districts because it's split along Grand and Merrimack in my ward, which, you know, I was told that that would enable more police resources to be put along those two important commercial corridors and neighborhood commercial corridors. That has absolutely not happened. What I shared with the chief at the time was that, you know, when you have that geographic split, you're actually going to end up with resources being pulled into other hotspots, you know, whether that's in the third district with Soulard or downtown when Mardi Gras is going on or what have you, or in the first district when, you know, there's a car break-in in Princeton Heights, no offense to my colleague from the 12th Ward, but they'll, you know, do the kind of, you know, group and swarm for a few weeks around, you know, a car break-in. When I've got, you know, 14 homicides in my neighborhood this year so far, 14 homicides in my neighborhood this year. That is absolutely unacceptable. It's not okay. You know, and while I don't necessarily agree that we, you know, should go back to nine districts, you know, there's been absolutely no conversation on this. You know, the fact that this is coming off of the informal calendar, that it's passed out of committee, and the mayor's office hasn't had one conversation with myself or at least a number of my colleagues that I'm aware of, is absolutely unacceptable. a number of my colleagues that I'm aware of, is absolutely unacceptable. I don't understand how you can have something, a board bill such as this, that addresses the infrastructure of public safety in our city and the mayor's office has yet to have a conversation with members of the Board of Aldermen about whether or not her administration supports this or opposes this. That is basic communication between the executive and legislative branch of government that is not happening. It is unacceptable and it has been happening for three years now. We're now on, I believe, our fourth legislative, you know, aide to the Board of Aldermen. You know, I'm sorry, this is, it, it's running completely disorganized. I am frustrated beyond belief. Last night, I had another shooting at Virginia and Merrimack, two of them in fact. At the other end of Virginia, I had another shooting, it's actually in the 11th Ward, but it's right across the street from the 25th Ward, at a gas station at Virginia and Bates, where just two nights ago, there was a 14-year-old shot in the neck. You know, this is, this is just becoming an epidemic in my ward in particular. You know, I can't speak for everyone else's. You know, but even when I try to get basic, basic public safety infrastructure for my ward, things like additional lighting along the Virginia corridor, I spent two and a half hours last night driving around other streets in the city and getting measurements and I'm buying a light scope, a light meter, to go out and get measurements. Because when I sat down in my ward capital meeting earlier this year, you know, I had neighbors who had gone and done an informal lighting survey along our commercial corridors and determined that Virginia had significant lighting deficiencies considering that there's 7,000 cars per day, that there's a major bus route, the number 73 runs on Virginia, which also brings in a tremendous amount of pedestrian traffic to that commercial corridor. So, I was going to be supportive of my neighbors and their desire to put more lighting on there. The problem along Virginia is that there's no utility space on the west side of the street because Amaran already has utility poles lining there because there's no alleyway behind those properties. So, I was told by the Streets Director, Traffic Commissioner, "Go talk to Amaran. If you get their permission, we'll move ahead with this." I went back and forth with Amaran for months, finally got their support. Amaran was supportive. I had the ward capital to put into those projects to create additional lighting to improve the, you know, at least perception of safety on a street in my ward. And I've been going back and forth with the mayor's office on whether or not to be able to do that. It's absolutely unacceptable. And for this board bill, which has major repercussions on public safety infrastructure in the city of St. Louis, to not even have a conversation with anyone in the mayor's office since this passed out of committee, or anyone from the police department for that matter, my captain hasn't talked to me about it. I haven't had any conversations with any of the majors in the department about it. None of them have reached out to me to express their opposition or support of it. The chief hasn't, the Public Safety Director Office hasn't. Think about that. Think about that. That is completely appalling. I'm going to end up supporting this bill because I think we need to continue having conversations about how we support the infrastructure in this city. And I want to hear from the mayor's office about that. So, you know, while I don't necessarily agree that we need to go back to the nine districts, I do think that we need to have conversations around how those maps are drawn. I do think that we need to have conversations with the mayor's office on a regular basis about public safety and how we're going to support that going forward. So, I want to thank the Aldermen from the 21st Ward for at least bringing this to the public consciousness to have a conversation around it. And with that, I, I complete my time. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Alderman from the 5th.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I rise in support of this bill because I, I do know when we first changed those districts and my colleague from the 21st kind of broke that down and although he wasn't here, but he knows the history of it and that's exactly how it happened. And shortly after that, we knew that it wasn't working, you know, and so, and more important than that, if you be around these police officers, they'll tell you this stuff, you know, they hated redistricting, they hated how police districts were stretched like from one end of the city to the next and how it actually hurted response times. And so, when this came up in committee, what I found kind of disheartening was when the, the chief, he said, "We know this has been an issue." And it's like, okay, you're almost two years in this capacity at that level and we haven't addressed it. So, although everyone knows it's an issue, sometimes you have to put that fire out there to make people just go ahead and do what they know that they need to do. And I definitely support this and I had no knowledge that there hadn't been any communication between the mayor's office and just all of us, but I know anytime I go somewhere, people will ask, "Are we really going back to nine districts?" Yeah, we're happy about it. So, I think that we, we should be communicating. If, if it's something this serious in our city, of course, our crime is through the roof, we should be communicating and Alderman Cohen, you almost struck a nerve. I've been waiting on cameras for two years now. I've had $250,000 allocated for cameras to create a mousetrap to deter crime in my ward and for so many years, it's been, okay, we're, we're getting somebody else, we can't get cameras right now. Now, it's like, we, the bulk of the money is going on fiber because in my ward, we're up there in a, a dead zone. We have to type, tap into fiber at Soldiers Memorial to even get a camera to deter stuff. You know, even when you have nonprofits spending money on cameras by themselves, we're, we're trying to spend taxpayer dollars to coincide with that, to deter some of this crime and the system in place is antiquated and it's ultimately doing a disservice to our constituents. And I just hope that we can get past it and I hope that we can do, you know, what we need to do to fully address crime and, and dispersion of officers, doing an equal distribution of them. That's, that's key because if you have this crime going on and people can't get there, that's the problem. So, that's all I have, but I definitely support this bill.
All right. Thank you. Alderman from the 1st.
Mr. President, members of the board, not only did I support this bill, I asked the primary sponsor if he would add my name. When I gave him in 1991, when I arrived at the Board of Aldermen, we did not have superstations. We had nine districts, so it didn't, the redistricting didn't start with Dotson, he just made it worse. It actually started when Clarence Harmon became the mayor, I mean, the, not the mayor, but the police chief. And then they came and told all of us how wonderful it would be if instead we had all those nine buildings, if we combined those buildings into superstations. That was not the truth. I've served since, I've served with Police Chief Sheetz, Harmon, Henderson, Moqua, Isom, Dotson, and now Hayden. The Public Safety Director and, and the Police Commissioner are both very good friends of mine, but I'm not satisfied with the policing that we are receiving. When we went to the superstations, that didn't work. And in fact, under Moqua, we actually cut one of the districts. I want to say, what was it, Alderman, was it the fourth or the second? It was the fourth. It was so large in South St. Louis that under Moqua, they divided that and made 4-1 and 4-2 or something like that, which should have happened to the sixth district. Anybody who knows about the sixth district, and that would be the second ward, the 27th ward, the 21st ward, the first ward, and I don't know if part of the third is in it or not, but it is a ridiculous district. It goes from the chain of rocks down to, I don't know, someplace Grand or something like that. There is no way that you should have the same amount of police officers in the sixth district that you have in the other ones. I'm also equally unhappy. We used, I used to have six, seven, and eight. Now, I'm part of five. And I, I've said this to the chief and I said it to the Public Safety Director, we get no policing because we're on the edge of the Central West End. Well, every time I go down Euclid, what I would see, I won't see that anymore, is the fifth district trucks sitting at Culpeper's. And I did relay this to the Police Commissioner and, and the Public Safety Director and the Police Commissioner said to me, there was a Alderman from South St. Louis that said the same thing. The reason why you said the same thing, because that truck was already there, always. You couldn't see them in my ward, but you could see them sitting right there at Culpeper's. So, Culpeper's was greatly policed. And so, some people say, "Well, the Central West End has private police," but then they shouldn't be in my police vehicles then. If they're private police, be in private police. This was not private policing. We have horrible policing in the fifth. It is horrible. So, because the districts are too large. So, when a former Police Chief Dotson came over, I was back here. I had been gone for 10 years. I came back here, I sat and listened to him sell a bunch of malarkey. In fact, the former Alderman from the 21st Ward questioned him at length about, "Are you saying ...?" Because he started talking about the calls for service and he challenged him and said, "You cannot be saying that somebody who calls about litter is the same thing about if somebody's life." He challenged him over and over and over. And at that time, I believed that the Chair of Public Safety was the former Alderman from the 7th. She's gone, hallelujah. And she would not let, people who were not on the committee, which I wasn't, ask questions. Afterwards, I talked to the Police Chief Dotson at length and said that, "This is the most outrageous, crazy thing I've ever heard. When you base police services on calls, you have no business being the police chief." And that's what I told him, "And you won't be here much longer." Because there are certain people that will call all, in every ward, in some wards more than others, they'll call about every little thing. So, you're actually going to assign the police base on if somebody calls about litter and you're not going to look at what the crimes are being committed, but that is what he did. When the police, when Hayden came in to speak to our, to the committee, I wasn't on it, but I want to thank the Public Safety Chair from the 23rd, he did let me ask questions. I actually came not only to ask questions, I came and signed up to testify in favor of this bill as a citizen because I have actually watched what has happened each and every time as they consolidated these districts and these buildings and each time telling us what savings we would have and how much better policing and none of that has occurred. Now, people are putting the onus on the Alderman from the 21st Ward to bring information to show that it would be better, but why didn't the police bring over here to show us that it's been better all this time? Since they've changed it three times, they should have been bringing information to show us that this has been better. And the reason why they haven't been bringing that information, because policing is not better and we all know that. So, I did question the Police Commissioner and I asked him, "Did, did he remember when the former Police Chief changed it?" He said he did. We talked about that happened five, six years ago. I said, "Did you think that was a good idea?" He said, "No." I said, "So," and he, and he talked about that because basing policing on calls for service was not a good idea. And I said, "So, and how long have you been the Police Commissioner now?" "Two years." "What have you done to change that situation?" He had no answer. This is my friend, but he had no answer because they haven't done anything. He said, "Oh, he needed more time to do some paperwork and to gather stats and data." You can gather stats and datas from now into 2025. We already know the outcome is not a positive one. It has not been in our best interest to, to do what we have done. I even talked to him about, "Do something right now with the sixth. It's just ridiculous. It's just horrible. Give, show some good faith effort about the sixth and then we maybe could look at some other things." Nothing has been done. They counted on being able to pressure the primary sponsor not to do this. And he did give them respect and not, not to pass it until this time. He should have passed it right away because what I then did is went out from behind the desk and I went as a citizen and testified to some of the things that I'm saying now and said that we need to put a fire under the chief, I mean, the Commissioner and the Public Safety Director. This needs to be done. I also never supported us getting local control. I never thought that that was thought, thought out and we defeated it in my ward. And the reason why is that, one of the reasons why is that we always talk about these giant chains, just like when we go to these 14 wards, you guys are going to find out. And there's no really thought-out process about how things work. We just say, "Oh, that's a great idea. The trolley is a great idea," except for it's not, okay? You spend millions and millions of dollars and then people try to make it work afterwards. If you really got a good plan, you should be able to have the plan mapped out and to go through steps and these are the steps that we're taking. That didn't happen. So, when we looking at these changes and things like that and nobody's putting anything in effect, so when we got local control, the first thing that we got rid of was the Police Commissioners. Why is that important? That's important because right now, they have, the citizens have no place to go to if they want to make police complaints. So, we didn't set that up. All of a sudden, the Police Chief became really a political appointee of the then-current mayor, which was Mayor Slay. And what people don't know is that Dotson got his raise by a double promote, I'm sorry, a double promotion, not his raise, but he got his appointment because there was a double promotion. He didn't go through the usual chain of commands to become the Police Chief. But that was done because now the mayor could play that game. That before, the mayor had to deal with the Police Commissioners. That is not a good idea. We've not seen any kind of improvements by the city taking over the police. I don't see the money that we've saved. Nobody's given us anything to say that we've saved money. We are giving white shirts or starting, pretty soon, we'll start to outrank, outnumber the blue shirts. When we give out these numbers about how many police, we fudge and talk about how we don't have certain amount of police. But as the Chair of Public Employees, I know that we have a group of 90 or so people that are getting paid to the police department. They're not full police officers, but they're doing policing. So, we do that to make people anxious and to say, "We need to let the police officers move out of the city," which we saw, we showed down here and we're not in support of that. But the whole thing is that, to me, the entire time these changes have been occurring, the police department has not listened to us. The members of the board did not want them to go to superstation. They didn't, they, they listened to the Police Chief Dotson, but there was many people that were not happy about them going to six districts. And there was no, nothing has ever been put in place to say, "You come back here in six months or eight months and you tell us how this is better." And they didn't because they couldn't. We just, once this happens, we just accept it and we go on and on. So, my testimony before the committee was that, as a person who had watched all these changes go by, none of them had improved anything, that we have to light a fire under people. The Aldermen has made a very reasonable offer that if you can prove that this is bad and that it's not in the best interest of the city, hey, I'll work to, to, to amend or change the ordinance or revoke the ordinance, but first you got to say, you got to prove something. And the Alderman from the 25th Ward makes such a good point when he talks about nobody talking to you, nobody saying, "This is the position." Nobody coming to say, "This is why this will be a problem." And the Alderman from the 5th is correct. If you are out in the streets and you're talking to the everyday police officers, they think going back is a great idea. They don't get a say though, because I know this is top-heavy and we got lots of people at the top who have an idea, but they're not out in their streets. I know the police, the current police commander, he knows about being in the streets. He used to be my major. He was a very good major. He actually did community policing, put tents out on corners and brought the police and knocked doors. So, I was very excited about him becoming the Police Chief slash Commander, but I'm not excited with what I see going on now. And I get complaints all the time about the lack of policing in my community and I like, I understand the triangle and I keep getting calls from the press about, "Well, what about the triangle?" But the triangle only addresses murders. I don't want it to get to murders. So, luckily, I don't have the number of murders in my community that Alderman from the 25th said, but we have other things. And if you let things build up, they will get to be that. We have people doing nuisance things. We have nuisance gas stations like Salamas, which we need to get rid of. We have people doing some shooting, but not as much. But we have people illegally parking, illegally repairing cars. We have people breaking into buildings. We have people setting fires. So, there are other policing matters that we need to have addressed in our community. And if the only thing we're going to have addressed is the murders, that means we got to get to the worst-case scenario before we get policing. I don't think that that's appropriate. I heard for many years, starting with Clarence Harmon, when he was the Police Chief, about community policing. I think it is a beautiful idea that we used to have. And people did, used to know the police and they knew their names and the police knew them and they knew the communities and they walked around in the communities and that was community policing. That does not happen anymore. If we see a police car, we are lucky. So, whatever we can do to put a fire under the police, to say that, "Look, we're unhappy and we want something to change," I'm for it. And I don't have a problem with there being nine districts again. I think smaller districts where they know the community makes for better policing and I am in full support of this and I hope that the mayor and the Public Safety Director and the Police Chief, that they hear this, that we are serious about making sure that some... something gets done about crime in our community. And I want to thank the alderman from the 21st as being the primary sponsor, and sometimes you just have to light a fire under people, and I hope this will do it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Alderman from the 12th, you were up prior to the alderwoman from the 6th, but do you want, would you like to defer to the alderwoman from the 6th? Yeah. Alderman from the 6th, even though the alderman from 12th has been up much longer than you, he's deferring to you, please.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I guess chivalry is not dead. Thank you. Thank you, Alderman. I rise, I'm confused. When I first heard the alderman from the 21st pull this off the calendar, I was inclined not to vote for it, because I do my best down here to be as collaborative as possible and to make sure that the, the way that we are working works well for everyone. And to the points of the alderman from the 1st and the 25th, it is troubling to me that this has been sitting on the calendar and no one has reached out to us to let us know what their thoughts are and what works well and what doesn't. And so, I did text the chief, and I reached out to the Police Officers Association, and then I said to myself, why, why am I panicking trying to be collaborative if, if other people are not taking, making that a priority? The chief did say that he has some other IT priorities and thinks that he can get to this by the summer, but the alderman from the 21st indicated that in committee, the chief said that he only needed a month. So, I am going to vote for this today, and I've been working well with the alderman from the 21st on modifying a number of other bills, and so, I'm confident if we need to make changes, or as the alderwoman from the 1st mentioned, for some reason, rescind the ordinance or update it, we can do it at that time. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Alderman from the 12th?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Actually, this is a good bill, and I can tell you this, when I was on Public Safety when Chief Dotson was here, I spoke up three months after redistricting and told him it doesn't work. And I know it doesn't work. You know why? I've been out there in the 6th district, the 5th district, the 4th riding, and the one that really amazed me, I'm in the 6th district one night, we're at the far end, that's a hit-and-run pedestrian down and injury. It seemed like it took us 25 minutes to get there with lights and sirens, and we were going 60, 60 miles an hour a little better to get there. So, yes, I don't think redistricting worked. It was a plan hashed out by the farmer mayor and Chief Dotson, and we quit hiring policemen all of a sudden for a few years. So, yes, it would be a lot nicer if we, if we can get this done. I'd like to see it get done, but here's what I worry about here. Everybody is saying they don't see a policeman in their neighborhood. I can guarantee they do ride, it might only be once, because they are busy out there, and there's stacked calls, and there's everything else. But, you know, and then when there's a shooting, you know how many policemen tied up in the shooting? The one by Virginia Bates last night, I mean, it was mobile reserve, the police homicide, same words everywhere else. But yeah, I think it's time to go back, it's proved it hasn't worked. You know what? Commissioner Hayden was appointed, he used to, he said, I never had the tools before to get the work done, now I have them at my, at my disposal. Well, chief, gross of cojones, open your mouth, tell the Director of Public Safety, you run the police department. And you know what? I'll probably get in trouble again. I just got off timeout on my riding lungs. But you know, you have to speak up. Let the police commissioner run the police department. Let the Director of Public Safety look over safety. I mean, that's the idea, I think, of having a Director of Public Safety. I will agree, we got way too many white shirts in this department. My idea is, I talked to the Director of Personnel, I want to introduce a bill to start reducing it by attrition and retirement. Says we can't do it. We have four lieutenant colonels in this city. It's totally ridiculous. We have six majors, three more than we should have. Captains can do what majors do, lieutenants can do what captains do as they step up. And here's the best statistic, and I've researched it. You have a sergeant for every three and a half policeman on the street. When you had 1,900 policemen, you had a sergeant for every seven or eight. Now, they're throwing good money after bad with promotions. Put a hiring freeze on for three years, look how much money goes back into their budget. You know, I mean, let's, let's be realistic. And the only other problem I see, you know, and I do want to go back here, I think the police academy is about seven or eight months long in total. Here's the problem, we'll never, ever catch up again, because by the time that one academy gets done, you have that many more policemen that's either retired or went somewhere else. So, you know, you have to make something incentives and be driven to keep people here, keep wanting to work here. You know, Prop P passed, said there'd be enough to give them a $10,000 raise. Well, somebody dropped the ball, because then they came and said, well, we have to figure the pension costs in. So, you ended up with 6,200. Now, I feel we still owe them $3,800, and we're still collecting Prop P money. I like to see them get the difference. Just keep them competitive. And you know, there's a lot of policemen that want to stay here. There's a lot that lives in the city. But you know, we, we, we need to do something. I mean, the time has come, you know, got to figure out what's driving these kids killing each other. The 14-year-old was shot at the filling station the other night. That wasn't a random thing, and I'll wait for it to come out news, because you'll be shocked, it was a robbery gone bad amongst the three friends. But anyway, it's just a point. Yes, we do need to go, when police are running 10, 15 minutes, get to a call, that's terrible. You know, it really is. And when you go to superstations, it takes you a good 10 minutes to actually get back in your district. So, thank you.
All right, thank you, Alderman. Alderman from the 22nd?
Mr. President, members of the board, with the alderman from the 21st yield?
Alderman from the 21st, will you yield to the alderman from the 22nd? Alderman from the 22nd, I'm going to ask you to move to this other mic also, that's, yeah. Please proceed, Alderman. Alderman from the 21st, will you yield to the alderman from the 22nd? Alderman from the 22nd, please proceed.
Alderman, do you remember in the committee hearing, having discussions with the police commissioner about his thoughts of redistricting and whether or not he was opposed to nine districts?
Uh, yes, I do. In fact, he did tell me he was opposed to nine districts, as well as the Director of Public Safety. They told me they can compromise on seven.
Okay. And out of courtesy, on October 25th, you put this bill on the informal calendar, correct?
Yes.
And since October 25th, are you suggesting the police commissioner nor the Public Safety Director has reached out to you, have communication, is that correct?
No, that is correct.
Okay. I'm not a police officer, I'm in law enforcement. I like to stay in my lane. I support nine districts. I am troubled by the lack of response time, and it's not the police officers' fault. I mean, they're literally jumping from call to call to call. And if you're in the 6th district and you're up at 270 in Riverview, and then you have to fly down to the 21st, I mean, that's a long haul. And if there's a shooting, then all the cars in the district tend to be at that one location. So, if you have a burglary or non-life-threatening issue, you need the police, they're just not coming for probably hours. I'm disappointed that there hasn't been any communication with the alderman from the 21st. This is a very serious matter. I remember one of my takeaways was the fact that the chief basically said he needed more time. Well, it's been six or seven weeks already. He also said that they were doing a software upgrade, you know, as how they capture data, and that would be helpful when they design, you know, the districts, whether it's seven, eight, or nine. I'm like the alderwoman from the 1st, I can use, I think more than that might be helpful. Community policing, and when you get it down to the lowest level and people actually know they're police officers, that makes policing easier for our police officers, because you have that relationship and they're willing to communicate with our police officers. So, they could have 12 districts, it would be fine with me. Alderman from the 21st, I'm going to ask you this question. Is there anything in your bill that would prohibit the police commissioner or the captains in the districts from having a conversation with the alderman just to get our thoughts about?
No, I will welcome such.
Okay. So, through this course of time, your bill says basically 180 days from the effective date of this ordinance. So, basically, within 180 days, would you support the fact that they would come out in the community and talk to people and, and really listen to the community about their concerns before they decide how many districts that they're going to have, whether it's seven, eight, or nine?
I have no problem with that.
And there's nothing in your bill that would prohibit them from doing that, right?
No.
And I'm going to assume you support community engagement at all levels?
Absolutely.
Okay. So, there's actually no reason, I think this is very reasonable, that 180 days, and actually there's been an extension of six additional weeks, because the police commissioner knew that this bill was coming. He would like it slowed down. Courtesy was extended for it to be slowed down for six weeks. And it's unfortunate, and it's been said before, that sometime you have to light a fire upon the certain departments before we get some tangible results. And it's not to be a fight. I would hope that this is taken as a nudge for the police commissioner to listen to the alderman, listen to our concerns, and really try to work hard to make it better. So, I support Board Bill 107, and I would like the, be added as a cosponsor, and I thank the alderman from the 21st ward for bringing this forth. It is something that was long overdue, and this conversation has been long overdue, but it doesn't mean that we have to stop having the conversation today whenever the bill passed. We can still continue to have the conversation. I think there needs to be more conversation with our commanders in the districts and the alderman and the community. Sometime, we have to take a step back and pause and really listen to our community. I think our police department caught up so much in this react mode, to the point that it's hard to even see what's going on. And at some point, guess what? You become numb to it. If you just, it just becomes something you just do every day, it's just, okay, another call, another call, another call. And I think we're better than that. I think we deserve better services than that. I think we put a huge burden on our police officers, certainly they're overworked, a lot of them are doing overtime because we're understaffed. I can't imagine we're getting 100% or even 75% of our police officers when they're doing all this overtime, because you get tired. And when you get tired, your patience, you know, grows thin. And so, sometime, we're engaging the community in a way that's not in their best interest. So, again, I appreciate an applause to Alderman from the 21st, and let's move on and pass this bill. Thank you.
All right. Madam Clerk, please make note that the alderman from the 22nd asked that his name be added as a cosponsor. Alderman from the 28th?
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I do support, you know, what we're trying to do here today with the redistricting and increasing the number of districts, and I think, you know, we're all very frustrated with the allocation of, of resources right now. I did go back and, and listen to the hearing, and what I heard from, from the chief was that he's also in favor of, of redistricting and wants to be able to get some data on how do we do this well, do it strategically. We know things aren't working now. I don't think our choices are, do we continue the way that things are, or do we go back to how they were before? I think we can be a little more strategic and, and forward-thinking and say, let's get the most recent data we can, and let's draw, draw lines that are going to be most effective. So, I do have a question for the alderman from the 21st, if you will yield?
Alderman from the 21st, will you yield to the alderwoman from the 28th? Alderman from the 28th, please proceed.
Thank you. So, Alderman, this bill says that the, the lines would be drawn in accordance with the map that's attached as the exhibit. So, I, I heard you say that you think having some community engagement in this process makes a lot of sense. What sort of flexibility, do you see that this map would change? Is there flexibility, I guess, in this bill to respond to the data that the chief may get in the next few months and to what we hear in community engagement, or are the lines in this map essentially set in stone?
No, it's not. That's me, they'll be up to the mayor's office, the Director of Public Safety, and the police commissioner. And with the maps that is attached, these are just the districts prior to 2012, when we had nine. I just went back to that, that same model. And I want to protect the, the ones in the upper command of the police department that actually helped me with this board bill, but there are three higher-up white shirts that believe this board bill is essential to improving public safety in the city of St. Louis. But of course, for their own personal protection and safety in their livelihoods, I cannot mention their names, but they are the ones who helped me draft this legislation, because they believe in it. And again, these are just the former maps that we had prior to 2012, when Commissioner Dotson changed it.
Okay. So, you see this being a data-informed, community-informed process?
I would hope so. I would encourage it to be, absolutely.
Okay. Thank you. I have no further questions. Thank you, Ms. President.
All right. Any further discussion? Alderman from the 19th?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I stand and rise to support this bill. I'd like to add my name.
Madam Clerk, please make note, Alderman from the 19th.
Thank you. The alderperson from the 21st ward has done a lot of work on this, but there was a lot of conversation in the community about this before the bill came about, and I think that's what helped him want to move forward with the bill. There is, and if you talk to the rank and file who work on these streets every night for us, they are frustrated to ask an officer to do the best job he can do, and he has to come from, let me give you an example. My ward, I've always had one district. Now I have three. The second, the third, and the fourth. So, if something happens in that near-south side ward, somebody has to either come all the way from the second district for block boundaries, or the third. And that just makes no sense. And these, and I talk to my police officers all the time. I purposely drive around the city and stop and talk to them on the streets, and they are frustrated, because they don't believe that they are giving their best, and they can't, they can't do it. If you ask somebody, if you ask someone to do a job and do their best, then help them with the tools and resources and the planning so that they can do their best. And it regards to anything else that is out there going on in the, in the media, in the courts, or whatever. At the end of the day, you need a good working police department, and you need to have the morale up, and they need to have the ability to do the best job they can do. And so, I support this bill. I support the alderperson from the 21st ward for getting this far with it, and I hope that we have the opportunity today to pass it. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman, Alderman from the 24th?
Thank you, Mr. President. If, if, it would have been asked of me, when we started this, this morning, where I was at on this bill, I probably would have been opposed to it, because I hadn't gotten much feedback on either side, and so, I would have stuck with the status quo. After hearing from, from all of you, I, I, I will be supporting this with the caveat, having not heard much of anything from the mayor's office, from the Director of Public Safety, from the chief of police, if there is any glaring issue from their perspective with this bill, I would ask that they, they reach out to us and, and let us know so that we, we can put together something that's going to be useful for the entire city and be helpful on the public safety front, because I know from talking to officers on the street and, and my captains, that there is frustration as, as the alderman from the 12th pointed out, when you have to go with lights and sirens and, and it takes 20 minutes to get from point A to point B. I don't think anyone sitting in this room is interested in that. When, when we call 911, when our friends, family, constituents, neighbors call 911, they expect someone to be there as quickly as possible, and that, that amount of response time is, is just not what, what we need in this city. So, I will be supporting this, and I would encourage anyone from the mayor's office, anyone from the police department, to, to reach out and, and let me know if, if it's something that they have an issue with, if there's any issues, because as, as the alderman from the 21st pointed out, he's willing to, to tweak this to make it work. And so, if, if there needs to be a tweak, let's do that. Otherwise, let's get this done. Otherwise, let's get this done. Thank you.
Alderman from the 4th.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I'd like to know where we house these new districts, or would they be placed? Because the LA District in my ward is a daycare now. And I think that bringing these nine districts back will bring back visibility is what we need, because crime is that of an opportunity. And without the visibility, people can be seen to commit more crimes. But I'd like to know, are we going to build a new A District in the 4th Ward?
Would you like the Alderman from the 21st to yield for a question?
President.
Could you please answer the question of the Alderman from the 4th?
Absolutely. Alderman, Board Bill 107 does not dictate that new stations or, it does not dictate new stations. So they will work out of the three stations that we have now, North Patrol, South Patrol, and Central Patrol. It's just instead of each of those stations having two districts, they want to have three districts. So they will work out the stations that we currently have. So the one that would serve your ward would be the one that is in the first ward on North Union, as it is now. So there is no added expense with the purchasing of a new building for a new district headquarters.
Well, I support this measure, and if you want them, you can put them in my garage.
All right, thank you. Thank you. Alderman from the 15th.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I too was inclined today initially not to support this, mostly because I had not heard from anybody on this, which I think is, seems to be a very reoccurring theme of folks here today, that we seem to lack an overall communication from much of our police department. I am going to vote for this today. I think that, listening to some of this dialogue, I am very appreciative of the thoughtfulness of a lot of the communication that we've had today. Definitely changed my mind on some things. I think that we are all, whether we, you know, represent the north side or the south side, are very frustrated with police response times. We are frustrated by the lack of communication that we get from the police department. And if anything, this is leverage. This is how we negotiate. This is how we get the police department to the table, to work with us, to actually design a system that will work for our residents. So thank you to the Alderman from the 21st for bringing this forward, and thank you to my colleagues who helped me change my mind on this today.
All right, thank you. Alderman from the 23rd, and I'll be very brief because I do have somewhere to go also. But I do want to say, this is only perfection. We don't come back till the 10th. They're going to have four weeks to try to call us on the phone before we finally pass this. And there's one other thing, and a little bit different, one of the things that we better look at in the police department, there are 27 dispatchers down, and when you call, they're putting two districts together for one dispatcher. And so when you call 911, a lot of times, they don't answer right away. We better look at a lot of things when it comes to them. But again, keep in mind that the mayor's office, the police chief, everybody's got four weeks. They got our phone numbers, my number in case they forgot it, 314-718-0131. It's my personal cell. You can call me anytime. I'll be there. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderman from the 21st, you recognize the close on the perfection of Board Bill 107.
Mr. President, I renew my motion.
It's been moved by Alderman from the 21st, 2nd, and by Alderman from the 19th and 1st, that we perfect Board Bill 107. There's been a request for roll call. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderwoman Hubbard. Alderwoman Ingracia. Alderman Kotar. Alderwoman Rice. Alderman Gunther. Alderman Valmer. Alderwoman Martin. Alderman Ornowitz. Alderwoman Murphy. Alderwoman Howard. Alderwoman Green. Alderman Odenberg. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Todd. Alderwoman Davis. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vacoro. Alderman Orion. Alderman Kohn. Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. Alderwoman Boyd. Alderwoman Navarro. President Reed.
Aye.
Alderwoman Middlebrook. Alderwoman Rice. Alderwoman Martin. Alderwoman Howard. Alderman Kohn. Alderwoman Boyd. Eighteen aye votes, two no votes, and three present.
By vote, you sustain the motion. Alderman from the 21st, and perfected Board Bill 107.
Floor sub, sponsored by Alderman Mohammed, Alderwoman Davis, Alderwoman, I'm sorry, Alderman Vacoro, Alderwoman Ingracia, and Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. An ordinance prohibiting employers in the city of St. Louis from basing job hiring or promotion decisions on applicant's criminal history and inquiring about applicant's criminal history unto after has been determined an applicant is otherwise qualified for the position unless the employer can demonstrate their decision is based on all available information, including consideration of the frequency, recentness, and severity of the current criminal history, and that history is reasonably related to or bears upon the duties and responsibilities of the position, or the applicant is part of the final pool of candidates from which the job position will be filled, and all of the applicants in the pool are asked and containing a penalty clause, severability clause, and an effective date.
Alderman from the 21st, you recognize on the perfection of Board Bill 120, floor substitute.
Mr. President, I move for the perfection of Board Bill 120, floor substitute.
Moved by Alderman from the 21st, entertain a second on that motion. Seconded by Alderman from the 23rd. Alderman, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Board Bill 120 is something that we have been discussing for the past several weeks now. It is a banny in the box. We are all familiar with what that term is. I would ask for your unanimous consent on Board Bill 120.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? It's been moved by Alderman from the 21st, 2nd, and by Alderman from the 23rd, that we perfect Board Bill 120, floor substitute. All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries.
That is the extent of board bills for perfection.
Alderman from the 15th.
This be the appropriate time to ask to suspend the rules to move Board Bill 107 to the third reading report of engrossments and final pass.
We'll have Alderman from the 22nd add it to his if you'd like, because you have a list that you're going to suspend.
Board Bill 107.
And, so Alderman from the 22nd, you recognize?
Mr. President, members of the board, I move to suspend the rules for the purpose of moving the following board bills to the third reading consent calendar. Board Bill 107, Board Bill 136, Board Bill 89 Committee Substitute, and Board Bill 172.
Please repeat the bills for the clerk.
Board Bill 107, Board Bill 136, Board Bill 89 Committee Substitute, and Board Bill 172.
Madam Clerk, please make note of that. Alderman, it's been moved by Alderman from the 22nd, entertain a second on that motion. Seconded by Alderman from the 5th. Madam Clerk, you have every...
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderwoman Hubbard. Alderwoman Ingracia. Alderman Kotar. Alderwoman Rice. Alderman Gunther. Alderman Valmer. Alderwoman Martin. Alderman Ornowitz. Alderwoman Murphy. Alderwoman Howard. Alderwoman Green. Alderman Odenberg. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Todd. Alderwoman Davis. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vacoro. Alderman Orion. Alderman Kohn. Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. Alderwoman Boyd. Alderwoman Navarro. President Reed. Alderwoman Middlebrook. Alderman Moore. Alderwoman Rice. Alderwoman Martin. Alderwoman Howard. Alderman Kohn. Alderwoman Boyd. Eighteen aye votes and four no votes.
By vote, you sustain the motion. Alderman from the 22nd, and suspend the rules for the purposes of moving the aforementioned bills to the third reading consent calendar. Madam Clerk, at the requested Alderman from the 7th, please move Board Bill 107 from the regular third reading, from the third reading consent calendar to the regular third reading calendar. Third reading consent.
Board Bill 131, 133, 146, 150, 151 Committee Sub, 136, 89 Committee Sub, and 172.
Alderman from the 22nd, you recognize on motion for the third reading consent calendar.
Mr. President, members of the board, I move for adoption of the third reading consent calendar.
Moved by Alderman from the 22nd, entertain a second on that motion. Seconded by Alderman from the 3rd. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderwoman Hubbard. Alderwoman Ingracia. Alderman Kotar. Alderwoman Rice. Alderman Gunther. Alderman Valmer. Alderwoman Martin. Alderman Ornowitz. Alderwoman Murphy. Alderwoman Howard. Alderwoman Green. Alderman Odenberg. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Todd. Alderwoman Davis. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vacoro. Alderman Orion. Alderman Kohn. Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. Alderwoman Boyd. Alderwoman Navarro. President Reed.
Aye.
Alderwoman Middlebrook. Alderman Moore. Alderwoman Rice. Alderman Valmer. Alderwoman Martin. Alderwoman Howard. Alderman Kohn. Alderwoman Boyd. Twenty-two aye votes.
By vote, you sustain the motion. Alderman from the 22nd and third read and finally pass the aforementioned bills. Third reading, port of engrossments.
Board Bill 140, sponsor, floor subs, so there's Board Bill 140, floor sub, sponsored by Alderwoman Ingracia, Alderman Kotar, Alderwoman Boyd, Alderwoman Howard, Alderwoman Green, Alderman Todd, and Alderman Ornowitz. An ordinance, amending ordinance 67799, Section 2, to be codified as subsection 10.04.285E of the Revised Code of the City of St. Louis, regulating the conditions of animals kept outdoors, amending ordinance 66595, repealing section 10.04.010 of ordinance 67799, and enacting in lieu thereof a new section 10.04.010 to be codified in the Revised Code of the City of St. Louis pertaining to definitions, enacting a new code, section 10.12.070 of the Revised Code of the City of St. Louis prohibiting declawing of cats, and amending ordinance 70889, Section 32B1, adjusting the requirements for dangerous dog posted notice.
Alderman from the 6th, you recognize on third read and finally pass the Board Bill 140, floor substitute.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that we third read and finally pass Board Bill 140, floor substitute.
Moved by Alderman from the 6th, seconded by Alderman from the 12th, please proceed, Alderman.
As a reminder to everybody, this is a comprehensive update of our animal welfare laws here in the city of St. Louis. It includes provisions to allow innovative dog parks in areas of the city that typically would not be allowed to have those happen there. They would have a variance process so that the community and the health department had input before granting a permit for the business to operate. It also bans declawing cats here in the city of St. Louis and creates temperatures to allow the health department to enter property to check on pets when it's below 32 degrees or above 92 degrees, and prevents a, or, I'm sorry, includes a provision to generate dangerous dog signs at properties, and the requirements on the size of the lettering to make sure that people that are living in neighborhoods where dangerous dogs are aware of that. I'm happy to take questions.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderman from the 24th.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to commend the Alderwoman from the 6th during this process. I had some concerns about this, and she was very amenable to working them out and coming up with a bill that was going to work for everyone in the city. So if you could please include my name on this bill.
Madam Clerk, please make note of that, and Alderman from the 24th as a...
Thank you.
Well, we're on the third reading calendar. We're done.
Never mind.
Yes, yeah, last week. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderman from the 6th, you recognize the close.
Thank you, Mr. President. I renew my motion.
It's been moved by Alderman from the 6th, seconded by Alderman from the 12th, that we third read and finally pass Board Bill 140, floor substitute. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderwoman Hubbard. Alderwoman Ingracia. Alderman Kotar. Alderwoman Rice. Alderman Gunther. Alderman Valmer. Alderwoman Martin. Alderman Ornowitz. Alderwoman Murphy. Alderwoman Howard. Alderwoman Green. Alderman Odenberg. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Todd. Alderwoman Davis. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vacoro. Alderman Orion. Alderman Kohn. Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. Alderwoman Boyd. Alderwoman Navarro. President Reed.
Aye.
Alderwoman Middlebrook. Alderman Moore. Alderwoman Rice. Alderwoman Martin. Alderwoman Howard. Alderman Kohn. Alderwoman Boyd. Twenty-one aye votes and one no vote.
By vote, you sustain the motion. Alderman from the 6th and third read and finally pass Board Bill 140, floor substitute. By vote, you stay in the motion, Alderwoman from the sixth, and third read, and finally pass Board Bill 140, floor substitute.
Board Bill 152 floor sub, sponsored by Alderwoman Iglesias and the following Alderpersons: Gunther, Koltar, Cone, Middlebrook, Green, Rice, Davis, Todd, Murphy, Tyus, Ornowitz, Spencer, Orion, and Navarro. An ordinance prohibiting licensed medical and mental health providers from providing conversion therapy, also known as reparative therapy, ex-gay therapy, or sexual orientation and gender identity change efforts to a minor, and providing penalties for the violation of said prohibition, and authorizing the Director of Health Department to receive, investigate, and refer to the city councilor complaints of alleged violation of the provision of this ordinance, and containing an emergency clause.
Alderwoman from the sixth, you recognize on the third reading, final passage of Board Bill 152, floor substitute.
Thank you, Mr. President, I move that we third read and finally pass Board Bill 152, floor substitute.
Been moved by Alderwoman from the sixth, seconded by Alderman from the twelfth, Alderwoman, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President, this bill would prevent a very dangerous and discredited practice called conversion therapy from being practiced by licensed professionals here in the city of St. Louis. As we discussed last week, there is absolutely no recognized psychological or psychiatric association that believes that this is a practice that has any value at all. In fact, it creates serious problems with issues of depression, suicidal ideations, and suicide itself within the population of folks who have to undergo this traumatic procedure and set of therapies, which I hesitate to even use that word. And I really wanted to commend the diverse variety of colleagues who have signed on as co-sponsors of this, and I'm happy to take questions.
Any further questions, any further question? Any further discussion, any further discussion? Alderwoman from the sixth, you recognize to close.
Thank you, Mr. President, I renew my motion.
It's been moved by Alderwoman from the sixth, seconded by Alderman from the twelfth, that we third read and final pass Board Bill 152, floor substitute. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderwoman Hubbard. Alderwoman Iglesias. Alderman Koltar. Alderwoman Rice. Alderman Gunther. Alderman Valmer. Alderwoman Martin. Alderman Ornowitz. Alderwoman Murphy. Alderwoman Howard. Alderwoman Green. Alderman Oldenburg. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Todd. Alderwoman Davis. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vakoro. Alderman Orion. Alderman Cone. Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. Alderwoman Boyd. Alderwoman Navarro. Alder, I'm sorry, President Reed.
Aye.
Alderwoman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderwoman Rice. Alderwoman Martin. Alderwoman Howard. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Cone. Alderwoman Boyd. Twenty-one aye votes and one no vote.
By vote, you stay in the motion, Alderwoman from the sixth, and third read, and finally pass Board Bill 152, floor substitute.
Board Bill 155, sponsored by Alderman Gunther, an ordinance recommended by the Board of Estment and Apportionment, authorizing the city of St. Louis, Missouri to issue its taxable industrial development revenue bonds in one or more series in a total principal amount of not to exceed a hundred million dollars for the purposes of providing funds to pay the cost of acquiring, constructing, and proving an equipment and industrial development project in the city, approving a plan for such project, authorizing and directing the mayor and the comptroller to execute certain documents related thereto, and authorizing and directing the, and the taking of other actions, and approval and execution of other documents as are necessary or desirable to carry out and comply with the intent hereof.
Alderman from the ninth, you recognize on third reading, final passage of Board Bill 155.
Thank you, Mr. President, I move that we third read and finally pass Board Bill 155.
Moved by Alderman from the ninth, seconded by Alderman from the twelfth, please proceed, Alderwoman.
Thank you, Mr. President, Board Bill 155 is for the issuance of up to one hundred million dollars in the taxable industrial development revenue bonds. If we are fortunate enough to be able to get a new business, a new manufacturing business to the city of St. Louis, this will, essentially will help them for the financing of that project, bringing new revenue, new manufacturing, and new income to our city. So with that, I will answer any questions.
Any further discussion, any further discussion, any further discussion? Alderman from the ninth, you recognize to close.
Thank you, Mr. President, I would like to renew my motion.
It's been moved by Alderman from the ninth, seconded by Alderman from the twelfth, that we third read and final pass Board Bill 155. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderwoman Hubbard. Alderwoman Iglesias. Alderman Koltar. Alderwoman Rice. Alderman Gunther. Alderman Valmer. Alderwoman Martin. Alderman Ornowitz. Alderwoman Murphy. Alderwoman Howard. Alderwoman Green. Alderman Oldenburg. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Todd. Alderwoman Davis. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vakoro. Alderman Orion. Alderman Cone. Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. Alderwoman Boyd. Alderwoman Navarro. President Reed.
Aye.
Alderwoman Middlebrook. Alderman Moore. Alderwoman Rice. Alderwoman Martin. Alderwoman Howard. Alderman Cone. Alderwoman Boyd. Twenty-two aye votes.
By vote, stay in the motion, Alderman from the ninth, and third read, and finally pass Board Bill 155.
Board Bill 157, sponsored by Alderwoman Hubbard. An ordinance authorizing the execution of a redevelopment agreement between the city of St. Louis, Missouri, and 900 North Tucker Building LLC, prescribing the form and details of said agreement, authorizing other related actions in connection with such agreement, and containing the severability clause.
Alderwoman from the fifth, you recognize on third read and final passage of Board Bill 157.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board, I would move for a third read and a final passage of Board Bill 157.
Moved by Alderman from the fifth, seconded by Alderman from the tenth, please proceed, Alderwoman.
I had an oops moment there, sorry. Basically, Board Bill 157 has companion bills with it as well, 158 and 159. It's the Square project, we talked about it at Lentz last week. It's a bill that will bring 1,250 jobs to my neighborhood, it's a renovation of the old Post Dispatch building. The total project costs to be sixty-nine million dollars. I think it, it's a good place for us to be in, to offer these tech jobs to people in our community, and to just spur the whole conversation regarding tech in the Fifth Ward. I ask for your favorable support. It, a lot came out in committee, they do a lot for small businesses, and just everything else, and I think it's totally good for the city, and I hope that I can have your favorable support.
Any further discussion, Alderwoman from the fifteenth.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board, I'm not going to belabor very many points because we did talk about this at length last week. I had laryngitis and was not able to really talk, so I promised my constituents I would say a few things, and the Alderwoman from the eighth, who was unable to be here today. You know, I'll start off by saying that I think, you know, Square's presence here is overall a good thing for our community. The qualms I have and the questions I have are really about the level of tax subsidy that is necessary. In all of these deals, we have to figure out what is that balance? How do we, how do we grow our tax base while also growing business here? How do we create an environment that does, you know, make businesses want to locate here while also ensuring that, you know, as a city that is struggling to do very basic functions like pick up trash, or have good police services, or pave our roads, that we have, our corporate citizens are paying into the collective tax pool at the level that they are capable of paying into that pool in order to support these services? And, and my concern with Square is that, that this is a lot of tax subsidy. And that, you know, Square saves money by coming to St. Louis. They save money by expanding here. It is cheaper to do business in St. Louis than it is in Silicon Valley, or in the West Coast, or in a lot of these other tech cities. It is, we have cheaper labor force, we have cheaper development costs, and, and we know that the CEO of Square is, is a billionaire. He is, his net worth is 2.8 billion dollars. That is more than twice what the budget of the city of St. Louis is. And he was recently quoted in Financial Advisor Magazine as saying that money is related to happiness, but after a certain point, it just piles up. He is admitting that he has a lot of money. And he's also somebody who cares about St. Louis. He's looking at St. Louis because he's from here. And so I think it's, it's, it's okay for us to be asking more of our corporations here. It's okay for us to be asking more of people who, who live here, who are from here, who are investing here to say, hey, you know, if you really care about St. Louis, we need you to pay more in taxes. Because we can't attract and retain people here if we do not have high-quality funded schools. We cannot attract and retain people here when our infrastructure is crumbling. We cannot attract and retain people here with high crime rates as a result of high poverty rates and a city that is continually struggling to, to make our basic budgets. And so I'm going to be a no on this today, like I was last week, because I, I think that we can do better, and I think we saw that with the MLS deal. Folks voted it down at the ballot box, and then they came back with another round, and there was a couple of us who still voted no on that. And for all intents and purposes, this final proposal that they're coming back to us with after the first of the year is leaps and bounds better than the first thing that they brought to us. And, and so I challenge us to continue to put pressure on some of these big businesses and some of these wealthy folks in our community, because they, they can and they should pay their fair share. Because we need them as a city to step up and do this so that we can, we can grow our tax base, we can grow more jobs here. And we, we also have the ability to pay for vital services for our city. And so overall, I think Square is, you know, expanding here is a good thing. I'm just skeptical of the amount of subsidy that is going into this, and I think that there's a better deal to be made. And I hope that as we go forward, we can figure out how we get those, those better deals so that we can have it all. We can have a growing city and a growing tax base while also funding vital services for our city.
Any further discussion, any further discussion? Alderwoman from the fifth, you recognize to close.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board, I would just like to ask for your favorable support again. And I said I wasn't going to say this, but I'll say it. In this body, you know, people don't elect you to just come down here and vote no on anything. And as my colleague from the nineteenth said last week, it's very telling when you vote no on everything in a certain particular ward, but you've just blessed something somewhere else. I mean, we did not have any of that commentary or discussion on Anheuser-Busch and their bills. And so, you know, people are naive, you may be appealing to the base in your ward and to the people that elected you, but when you get on the news, when you start talking to reporters, and you make these comments, you know, people see what's really going on, people are not naive, they see that, you know, it, it depends on who's bringing the, the bill, and it'll determine whether or not we talk about it. And I'll continue to say this, we have some flaws in our process, but I trust the experts at SLDC when it comes to certain things. I'm not a developer, I'm not a number cruncher, I don't even feel I'm in a capacity to fully negotiate this. I'm not an economist, I'm not Jonathan Ferry, I can't tell you how TIF bills are structured. Nobody in this body can tell you that they haven't done that type of work. So when people stand up and they, and they stop on, we should be doing this, we should be doing that, we should be doing this, we're just trying to get something done in our city, you know? In my community, we've been there for, forever without anything. I mean, when you look at sixty years of disinvestment, I'll say this, I'll say it again, anyone that's coming to my ward to try to transform what the city has left blighted and then decaying in ruins for years, I'm going to bless it. And so, I mean, I don't care, sometimes I will yield, sometimes I will not. And the reason I didn't yield last week is because you're not going to keep beat me up over the head and keep getting text messages from your friends when you had every opportunity to pose these questions to the people who could adequately answer these questions for you. So with that being said, I just ask for your favorable consideration of my board bill. I hope we get that swath and array of yes votes like we just got on the Anheuser-Busch bill. But if not, I just know that I'm trying to make decisions in the best interest of the Fifth Ward, and that's what I'm going to do every time, thank you.
All right, thank you, Alderwoman, it's been moved by Alderwoman from the fifth, seconded by Alderman from the tenth, that we third read and final pass Board Bill 157, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderwoman Hubbard. Alderwoman Iglesias. Alderman Koltar. Alderwoman Rice. Alderman Gunther. Alderman Valmer. Alderwoman Martin. Alderman Ornowitz. Alderwoman Murphy. Alderwoman Howard. Alderwoman Green. Alderman Oldenburg. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Todd. Alderwoman Davis. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vakoro. Alderman Orion. Alderman Cone. Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. Alderwoman Boyd. Alderwoman Navarro. President Reed.
Aye.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Middlebrook. Alderman Moore. Alderwoman Rice. Alderwoman Martin. Alderman Ornowitz. Alderwoman Howard. Alderwoman Davis. Alderman Cone. Alderwoman Boyd. Nineteen aye votes, two no votes, and one present.
By vote, you stay in the motion, Alderwoman from the fifth, and third read, and finally pass Board Bill 157.
Board Bill 158, sponsored by Alderwoman Hubbard. An ordinance recommended by the Board of Estment and Apportionment, authorizing and directing the issuance and delivery of not to exceed 11,850,000 dollars, plus issuance cost principal amount of tax increment revenue notes, series 20AB of the city of St. Louis, Missouri, prescribing the form and details of such notes and the covenants and agreements made by the city to facilitate and protect the payment thereof, prescribing other matters relating thereto, and containing the severability clause.
Alderwoman from the fifth, you recognize on third read and final passage of Board Bill 158.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board, I move for a final passage of Board Bill 158.
Moved by Alderwoman from the fifth, seconded by Alderman from the tenth, any discussion? Herein no discussion, there's been a request for previous roll, herein no objection, motion carries.
Board Bill 159, sponsored by Alderwoman Hubbard. An ordinance designating a portion of the city of St. Louis, Missouri as a redevelopment area known as 900 North Tucker Boulevard Redevelopment Area pursuant to the Real Property Tax Increment Allocation Redevelopment Act, adopting and approving a redevelopment plan, adopting and approving a redevelopment project with respect thereto, adopting tax increment financing within the redevelopment area, making findings with respect thereto, establishing the 900 North Tucker Boulevard Special Allocation Fund, authorizing certain actions by city officials, and containing the severability clause. and containing the severability clause.
Alderwoman from the 5th, you recognize on third read and final passage of Board Bill 159.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for final passage of Board Bill 159.
Moved by Alderwoman from the 5th, seconded by Alderman from the 10th. Any discussion? Any further discussion? There's been a request for previous roll. Hearing no objection, motion carries.
Board Bill 160, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey. An ordinance amending ordinance number 70599, approving and authorizing the execution of a redevelopment agreement between the City of St. Louis, Missouri and Vertical Realty Advisors LLC, authorizing other related actions in connection with such agreement and containing the severability clause.
Alderman from the 17th, you recognize on third read and final passage of Board Bill 160.
Yes, Mr. President, I move for third read and final passage.
Moved by Alderwoman from the 17th, seconded by Alderman from the 10th. Any discussion? Alderman from the 17th, you recognize the close.
I renew my motion.
It's been moved by Alderwoman from the 17th, seconded by Alderman from the 10th, that we third read and finally pass Board Bill 160. There's been a request for previous roll. There's been an objection to previous roll. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderwoman Hubbard. Alderwoman Iglesias. Alderman Koltar. Alderwoman Rice. Alderman Gunther. Alderman Volmer. Alderwoman Martin. Alderman Ornowitz. Alderwoman Murphy. Alderwoman Howard. Alderwoman Green. Alderman Odenberg. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Todd. Alderwoman Davis. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vacoro. Alderman Orion. Alderman Cohn. Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. Alderwoman Boyd. Alderwoman Navarro. President Reed. Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Middlebrook. Alderman Moore. Alderwoman Rice. Alderwoman Martin. Alderwoman Murphy. Alderwoman Howard. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Cohn. Alderwoman Boyd. 21 I-votes and 1 abstained.
By vote, stay in the motion. Alderwoman from the 17th and third read and finally pass Board Bill 160.
Board Bill 168, sponsored by Alderwoman Navarro and Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. An ordinance designating a portion of the city of St. Louis, Missouri as a redevelopment area known as the Forest Park Transit Oriented Development Redevelopment Area pursuant to Real Property Tax Increment Allocation Redevelopment Act, adopting and approving a redevelopment plan, adopting and approving a redevelopment project with respect thereto, adopting tax increment financing within the redevelopment area, making findings with respect thereto, establishing the Forest Park Transit Oriented Development Special allocations Fund, authorizing certain actions by city officials and containing the severability clause.
Alderwoman from the 28th, you recognize on third read and final passage of Board Bill 168.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that we third read and finally pass Board Bill 168.
Moved by Alderwoman from the 28th, seconded by the Alderman from the 12th and Alderwoman from the 13th. Please proceed, Alder.
Thank you. This bill, we had quite a bit of discussion last week on as well. It regards the development of a TOD near Forest Park Parkway and Bolivar. And I think we had good discussion last week, and I seek my colleagues' support in finally passing this bill.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderwoman from the 1st.
Mr. President and members of the board, sometimes it hurts to be the Chair of Rules because you have to sign all the bills, no matter if you agree with them or not. And also, in rules, we have to go through every one of the board bills. And so in going through this board bill, they have pictures of what they call blight in the 26th and 28th Ward. It is painful. I wish they would not have put these pictures in here. I would tell everyone to go into this board bill and look at A29 through A42, and it will be an eye-opener to you. Particularly, I want you to look at page A31, page 16. It talks about overgrowth and vegetation and deterioration of the improvements. If this is overgrowth, if this is overgrowth, this is why I say they play with TIFs. If this is overgrowth, then all of us live in a blighted area. My yard is blighted. It is ridiculous. It is ridiculous. I tell you to look at this piece of paper. Then they, the next page, they talk about the deterioration of improvements. They show a median. The median has all of the curve, there are some nicks on the median. There is hardly any median in the city of St. Louis that do not have nicks on the curves because drivers hit them, okay, all of the time. This is ridiculous. This is why we have to look at where we're doing TIFs. This does not meet the basic standard of what a TIF should be. We go to page 833, deterioration of parking areas. They have a couple of little cracks. I don't know who did this, but they ought to be ashamed of themselves to look at the little cracks that's in the parking area. This is not blight. This is not what the legislation was meant for. This is a misuse of the legislation. They couldn't have given me better examples. The next page is A34, debris and overgrown vegetation. Again, if this is debris and overgrown vegetation, the rest of the city is all blighted. I had the good fortune to meet with both of our state senators and several of our state reps regarding TIFs and the misuse in the city of St. Louis. I met last Friday with Otis Williams and other people about a hardware store that should have been here 22 years ago, that we are finally going to get to a good place, that we probably will get done. But they showed me a map up on the board of the TIFs in the city of St. Louis. Now, the whole beginning and impetus of TIFs was they were supposed to be able to inject and produce development in communities that were not getting them. There is not, there, the map does not show TIFs anyplace except for in the central quarter where they do not need anymore. It is an embarrassment. I've asked for it. I'm going to share it with you guys. I'm going to share it digitally with you and also print it out so that you can look at this. We have to address this miscarriage of justice in giving TIFs in the Central West End, and they're not doing what they're supposed to. When I showed the state reps these pictures here, everybody, we laughed. We laughed in committee about them. We're like, this is blight. And it was like funny. Our job in the rules was not to say if it was good or bad, but to engross. So we did engross, and we did our job, we did our job, but this is embarrassing. This should not be a TIF. I don't care. This shouldn't be a TIF. It was in my ward, and we need development, but it surely shouldn't be a TIF for something to get in the Central West End. The other thing that I know is that we are having a shortage of children in our community. Schools are down to embarrassing numbers. If you don't know about it, they're talking about closing Sumner, and they just built Vashon, and they're looking at Vashon. And while our school board was taking over for 10 years, the people in North St. Louis didn't even have a person on the appointed board. We had nobody to represent us for 10 years. Not one of the people who could appoint thought to think, oh, maybe we ought to have somebody for North St. Louis. So that was embarrassing for me. For 10 years, we had no representation. And in the meantime, they've closed down schools, they've made development decisions that adversely affected our communities, and our schools are closing at an alarming rate. But we are still given all kind of development tax incentives, tax abatements, and I'm not seeing how that's positively affecting our school boards. I do see all these charter schools. They closed all my schools except for the newest one in my area. And we got new charter schools coming in that's sucking the life out of our community. But we're sucking the life down here as we give all these tax abatements and TIFs. And this is an unnecessary TIF. If this is what they use as proof, it is ridiculous and has no business being a TIF. It's nothing personal. I would not support it in the 1st Ward or what was the 20th Ward. And I did not support SNUCs when they came with a BSC TIF, and this is even much more of one than that. And it doesn't, it shouldn't happen. This is a project that shouldn't happen if it can't be without TIFs. The TIFs are supposed to have some kind of effect in North St. Louis and parts of Southwest St. Louis, and that's not what's happening, and I can't support this. And when the Alderwoman from the 15th talked about that we have wealthy people that's doing these things, we're enriching certain neighborhoods at the expense of other neighborhoods. This is a bad development decision, and I stand opposed to it. And if I was already opposed to it, when they put these pictures in here, that just seals the deal for me. I could never vote for anything like this, and I will be voting no. And I implore the administration and all of us down here to look at what's going on and how we are harming our schools and other communities at the expense of certain neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderwoman from the 28th, you recognize the close.
Thank you, Mr. President. In closing, I do just want to address a couple of points. One, I think that this project is going to benefit our school system, and that about half of this site right now is not on the tax rolls. It's owned by MoDOT, and so it's not generating revenue for our schools right now. So I do think we're moving forward in that we're bringing opportunity and new revenue that will benefit our schools. The other thing, you know, I agree, you know, I'm not the photographer for these projects, and I think our definition of blight is really dictated by the state statute, and so SLDC is working within the statute that they have. I think it is something that we need to look at more closely, this particular site. If they were not replacing free parking for MetroLink and by-state bus riders, I think we'd be having a completely different discussion. But this project is going to enhance that entire site, particularly for people who take public transit. So I think it's, I think it's a good project, and I think that in this case, these revenues are going back to provide public benefit for the entire community. So with that, I renew my motion.
It's been moved by Alderwoman from the 28th, seconded by all the persons from 12th and 13th, that we third read and finally pass Board Bill 168. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderwoman Hubbard. Alderwoman Iglesias. Alderman Koltar. Alderwoman Rice. Alderman Gunther. Alderman Volmer. Alderwoman Martin. Alderman Ornowitz. Alderwoman Murphy. Alderwoman Howard. Alderwoman Green. Alderman Odenberg. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Todd. Alderwoman Davis. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vacoro. Alderman Orion. Alderman Cohn. Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. Alderwoman Boyd. Alderwoman Navarro. President Reed. Alderwoman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderwoman Rice. Alderman Gunther. Alderwoman Martin. Alderwoman Howard. Alderman Odenberg. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman Vacoro. Alderman Cohn. Alderwoman Boyd. 19 I-votes and 3 no-votes.
By vote, stay in the motion. Alderwoman from the 28th and third read and finally pass Board Bill 168.
Board Bill 169, sponsored by Alderwoman Navarro and Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. An ordinance authorizing the execution of a redevelopment agreement between the City of St. Louis, Missouri and Pearl Capital Management LLC, authorizing other related actions and connections with such agreement and containing the severability clause.
Alderwoman from the 28th, you recognize on third read and final passage of Board Bill 169.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that we third read and finally pass Board Bill 169.
Moved by Alderwoman from the 28th, entertain a second on that motion. Seconded by Alderwoman from the 16th. Alderwoman, please proceed.
So this is a companion bill to 168 that we just discussed regarding the TOD, the Forest Park TOD project.
Any further discussion? Alderwoman from the 1st.
Mr. President, members of the board, I also rise to oppose this bill, and I did want to address one thing that the Alderwoman from the 28th said, which also steps on my toes, which talks about how important it is for MetroLink and public transit. That's another big lie for North St. Louis, okay? I was here with the original votes. We were going to have a North-South distributor. They promised. We spent $50-something million on the folly in the trolley and talking about spending some more money for that. We have nothing done for the North-South distributor. I don't blame bureaucrats. I blame us because we got a majority of the people down here. We should not let East-West Gateway or MetroLink or whoever it is, none of them should be able to get any money from us until they show us a real, true plan for the North-South distributor and a date when it's going to happen. And when I hear the mayor and other people talking about saving that folly of a trolley and putting some more money, it makes my skin crawl. So when I hear the Alderwoman talking about how important it is with public transit, yes, because you have all these places in your community that have MetroLink, and we have none in all of North St. Louis. And they actually came from the airport with the big lie. So they had to come across my community and around it to get to yours. And so that's why I don't support these things because they have lied and been devious for all these many years, and then they just come back and act like, what are you talking about? I'm talking about, I understand you think how important it is for MetroLink. I do too. And when I see it going down Natural Bridge like it's been promised for all these many years, and when I see it hooking up to South St. Louis like it's supposed to, then maybe we can have conversations about how we can build all-important projects around our MetroLink. But what I'm looking at is that's not going to happen because we are going to continue to take and spend and abuse public money and then run to the public trough again and ask for some more money instead of saying, good money after bad. This whole trolley thing makes no sense, but we come with this great idea. This is a great idea because it's public transit, never talking about the fact that two parts of the city have no public transit, but we only have it downtown in the central quarter. We are continuing to build a city of have and haves-not and sucking up resources that should be going to all parts of the city. And you're never, ever going to build a community doing that. And South St. Louis is now seeing things that they didn't used to see because nobody has listened and heard, this is not how you do a city. At some point, when you have resources, you don't just feed several of your children and tell the rest of them that you cannot eat. You tell the children that are full that you have to eat a lot less while I feed some of these other children. And that's how we treat the North and parts of the South St. Louis. We don't do the things we're supposed to, and then we're surprised at the crime and the deterioration of what's going on. We count blight as grass this high while we're not even cutting all the grass that's supposed to be cut in North St. Louis. Backyards haven't been cut for three, four, and five years. That's a policy decision from Room 200, the mayor. That's her policy decision. It was the previous mayor's policy decision, and people blame all the people. And I tell them all the time, if you watch me, I oppose all this stuff because it is not fair to my community. I don't vote for it. But at the end of the day, it makes a difference who the mayor is and if they understand about inclusion and about making sure all of the city has resources, and this one doesn't and the one before it didn't. And therefore, here we go with all of these TIFs. And when you look at the TIF map, you're going to have to admit, if you're anybody truthful at all, that there is no TIF that is doing anything for development in parts of the city where they're not getting development. So for this reason, and because it's a ridiculous TIF, I will be voting no. And again, I ask for a recall. I'm sorry, for a roll call.
We got you.
I would ask for a recall from some people, too.
Yeah, we got you. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderwoman from the 28th, you recognize the close.
Thank you. I renew my motion.
It's been moved by Alderwoman from the 28th, seconded by Alderman from the 16th, that we third read and finally pass Board Bill 169. There's been a request for previous roll. Hearing no objection, motion carries.
Board Bill 170, sponsored by Alderwoman Navarro and Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. Board Bill 170, sponsored by Alderwoman Navarro and Alderwoman Clark Hubbard, an ordinance recommended by the Board of Estimant and Apportionment, authorizing and directing the issuance and delivery of not exceed $14,100,000 plus issuance cost principal amount of tax increment revenue notes, Series 28B of the City of St. Louis, Missouri, prescribing the form and details of such notes and the covenants and agreements made by the city to facilitate and protect the payment thereof, prescribing other matters relating thereto and containing the severability clause.
Alderwoman from 28th, you recognize on third read and final passes of Board Bill 170.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that we finally pass Board Bill 170.
Moved by Alderwoman from 28th, seconded by Alderwoman from 13th, Alderwoman, please proceed.
Thank you. This is the final bill in the series regarding the Forest Park TOD project, and I urge my colleagues, I request their support for this bill.
Any further discussion on Board Bill 170? Alderwoman from the 28th, you recognize to close.
I renew my motion.
It's been moved by Alderwoman from 28th, seconded by Alderwoman from 13th, that we third read and finally pass Board Bill 170. There's been a request for a previous roll. Hearing no objection, motion carries.
Board Bill 107, sponsored by Alderman Mohammed, President Reed, Alderwoman Tyus, Alderman Vacoro, Alderman Todd, Alderman Boyd, and Alderwoman Davis, an ordinance directing the City of St. Louis Division of Police, establish nine police districts, the boundaries of which shall be drawn in accordance with the map set forth in Exhibit A attached heretofore, and to the extent the Commissioner of the City of St. Louis Division of Police deems reasonable and appropriate in light of changing community and law enforcement needs, Division of Police resources, including officers, shall be apportioned equally amongst the nine police districts and each police district.
Alderman from the 21st, you recognize on the third read and final passage of Board Bill 107.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the final passage of Board Bill 107.
Moved by Alderwoman from the 21st, entertain a second on that motion. Seconded by Alderwoman from the 19th and Alderwoman from the 3rd. Alderwoman from the 21st, you recognize.
I renew my motion.
Any further discussion on third read and final passage of Board Bill 107? Alderwoman from the 24th.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I don't understand why there is a need to kind of force this through today after we all just sat here and I think had a really meaningful discussion, and a lot of us wanted to have input from the mayor's office, from the Director of Public Safety, from the Police Department, and I think it's a mistake to, to have that discussion, for a lot of us to say that we're open to input from, from other city officials and departments, and then to immediately turn around and throw this on a third-read calendar today to try and push it through today without giving any opportunity for those other city officials or departments to, to have the input in it that we, we, many of us just asked for. So while I was supportive very much of perfecting this so that we could get that conversation moving, I feel now a bit like we're trying to just ram this through and ram it down people's throats, and it doesn't feel right to me. Thank you.
All right. Alderwoman from the 19th.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. So at the end of the day, before the bill was written, before the bill was presented, much conversation had taken place suggesting to all those entities that were just mentioned that we look at this problem that we have. We know that our community is very concerned, our residents are extremely concerned, and our police officers, the rank-and-file that are out there on the front line every damn day trying to get it done. They want to be able to do a better job, and they have problems doing it because the tools are not there in place properly for them to do it. Now, let's get back to the fact that it's been sitting on the informal calendar all this time, with the knowledge of all those entities that were presented to need to have further discussion, knew that, and they still didn't move forward with any kind of action that was notable, I'll say that. I know there've been a few things in passing said, but there was nothing coordinated to move forward. But aside from all of that, in the bill, there's 180 days. There's 180 days, six months, and our commissioner said, "I need about a month in a public hearing." And we know all data is already there. We also know that we have a map of operations of nine districts that have been in process for years. Those stats are already there. We also know that we get reports, if you want it. They are established every month in every district, in every kind of category of concern. It's already there. So if we can't get this moving to help them move, we have a problem. And I don't want to let the residents down or those who are out there working hard every day on my behalf in that Police Department. We need to help our rank-and-file. We need to help our residents. We need to help this city that is under siege, and we gotta do better. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Alderwoman from the 15th.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I rise in support of continuing to pass this today for a couple of reasons. I think that we lose our leverage if we don't do this today, and I think that if we're passing this, we're doing it to call the Police Department to the table and say, "You now have 180 days to give us a plan to come to the table to figure this out." And if we don't do this now, what's gonna happen is we're gonna go on vacation for the next few weeks, and, and folks are gonna start to get phone calls and get picked off, and, and, you know, we know how politics works, so that we actually don't end up getting folks to the table to make the plan that we need to make. And so this today is an exercise in power in saying that as a body, we deserve to have a Police Department that comes and sits down with us and actually creates a plan that works for our residents. And I think the longer that we continue to delay this, we are giving away our power. And so I hope that we will not do that. I hope that we will go ahead and pass this today, get those 180 days moving, so that over the break, the executive branch is working on this, the Police Department is working on this. So when we come back after the first of the year, you know, hopefully before we end our session in, in April, we have something concrete that has been before the Board of Aldermen. So if you voted for this on second, on perfection, I really hope that you will vote for this again today, so we can get this done before we leave.
Alderwoman from the 23rd.
Yes, I guess I'm a little concerned, you know, to my friend John, make sure you count your votes, you know, because a lot of what I was saying was, they have a few days to come back to us before we final pass this. I'll stick with it, and my name's on it, but I would just caution, count the votes, make sure that we still have the votes to get this through, and it just doesn't die here today.
All right, thank you. Any further, Alderman from the 18th.
Mr. President, I really appreciate the most honorable board here today taking a stand, letting the police know that the police, that we make the laws. I want to repeat, for too long, the police think they make the laws and enforce the laws and do everything else. The police need to know, no group in America should be free to run around with guns or anything else and think that they don't have anybody that can control them. And we do control them. We need to be unapologetic. We need to, today, we need to pass this bill, and I really appreciate the 21st Ward Alderman putting this bill forward. So I stand in support of this bill. I stand with the 21st Ward Alderman and the board, and I hope everybody who voted before will pass this bill. And it's not anti-police. Every time we get up, they tell me, "Anti-police," 'cause they say, "Well, if you don't give us $6,400, and we only have three..." For every police officer, we have one sergeant. I would love, as a school teacher and a principal, when I was a principal and a school teacher, to have one, three students. For every teacher, I could have really done a much better job, but I didn't. I had thirty and forty sometime. What is the point? And the teachers didn't run around there under, without supervision. No, and we're the taxpayers, and I don't care what anybody's saying, so we're taxpayers, and they, and everybody who gets taxpayers' money, if they don't want to answer to the taxpayers, get out of the profession. If the elected officials, we get taxpayers' money, all of us. The City Hogs, these lights on today is paid for by the taxpayers, these desks, everything. That's who the boss really is, and I'm carrying out the wishes of the boss, the voters, the taxpayers, the citizens, and I will continue to carry out the wishes of the citizen. And anybody that don't like me representing the interests of the citizen, well, I'm sorry, and I'm not gonna be, I'm not even sorry. I just don't care if you don't like it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderman from the 21st, you recognize to close. Alderman from the 21st, you recognize to close. Alderman from the 23rd, you recognize for further discussion on Board Bill 107.
So, actually, I'm speaking and also stalling while he's counting votes. So I don't have a whole lot to say. I still, you know, I would caution to count the votes. You know, I said I planned to vote with it, and I will. I also said, giving them that extra time to get with us seemed to be, at least, you know, gives them some time to, to call us. I'm fine either way. I do know that we've reached out. I know John reached out to the chief, and we've been basically snubbed. That I do know. And either way, we have to get the conversation going, and if we don't exercise our authority to get the process moving forward, that's, that's on us. We have to fix this problem. And, okay, I think we're, I think John's all ready.
Alderman from the, Alderman from the 7th.
I'll give the Alderman from the 21st a couple of minutes to count his votes. I'm a no, for the record. I just think this is a bit hasty. I don't disagree with my colleagues that these districts need to be redrawn, but we're passing a law today that says it needs to be nine, and we're dictating what the district should look like, and I don't think that's appropriate. We don't know what the district should look like. I don't think anyone in this body is an expert in law enforcement that has looked at any data that could say, "This should be the map." Should it be nine? Should it be 12? I don't know how many districts there should be. I don't think the current plan is working, and I will support changes in the future, but I would like law enforcement professionals to weigh in on what we're doing. I get we're trying to send a message. I think we send a strong enough message by simply perfecting the bill today, leaving it and possibly amending it down the road versus third reading and final passing it today. I believe that was part of the debate earlier as well, is that we were gonna perfect it and then bring them back to the table, but I guess we've abandoned that strategy. I'll be voting no, 'cause I think this is hasty and ill-advised, and I think it's done without any thought to what these districts actually do need to look like and the current staffing levels and future staffing levels of the Police Department.
All right, thank you. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderman from the 21st, you recognize to close. Alderman from the 21st, you recognize to close.
And I yield to the Alderman from the 1st Ward.
Alderman, Alderman from the...
You, you, you have to close, Alderman.
Hold on, Alderman from the 21st, 'cause, from the 1st, I know, I've recognized Alderman from the 21st to close. Alderman from the 21st, you recognize to close.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. You know, we, we amend laws every Friday down here. If we pass this today, there is nothing that will prevent us from amending this in January or any other time that we need to, to make it appropriate and make it fit. We are the legislative branch of government, and the executive branch nor any other city department recognizes us for what we do or what we need. We allow ourselves to be beat up. We allow ourselves to be overstepped, and we do nothing, we say nothing, and our power is in the collective voice that we have as the Board of Aldermen, and we are losing that power. This board bill is not forcing anything. It's only attempting to make our community safer. Mr. President, can I place Board Bill 120, or no, Board Bill 107 on the informal calendar?
At the request of the sponsor, Madam Clerk, please place Board Bill 107 on the third reading informal calendar.
So noted. That is the extent of third reading report of engrossment.
Report of enrollment.
Board Bill 131, 133, 151, committee sub, 140, floor sub, 146, 150, 152, floor sub, 155, 157, 158, 159, 160, 168, 169, 170, 136, 89, committee sub, and 172.
All other business being suspended, the president shall in open session affix his Alderwoman from the 19th, you recognize on the motion for the courtesy resolutions calendar.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I move that we adopt our courtesy agenda calendar.
Moved by Alderwoman from the 19th, seconded by Alderwoman from the 22nd. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed. Pose, motion carries. First reading of resolutions.
Resolution 194, sponsored by Alderman Vocoro Prime Prevention Program Funds.
Alderman from the 23rd, you recognize on the first reading of resolution 194.
So actually, we're going to obviously put this in the Public Safety Committee. What this does is it gives the Public Safety Committee the right to start talking about the million dollars, how we're going to spend it. You know, we may decide what portions, how we're going to do what we do. And so it just starts a discussion on what we're going to do with that Prop 8 money.
Would you like to make a motion to send it to Public Safety?
Yeah. Well, I would like to make a motion. It has to go there. So I'd like to make a motion that we send this to the Public Safety Committee.
Moved by Alderman from the 23rd, seconded by Alderman from the 22nd. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Pose, motion carries. Madam Clerk, please sign Resolution 194 to Public Safety.
So noted. Resolution 195, sponsored by Alderwoman Howard and Alderwoman Murphy. Bevo Community Improvement District Board Members Appointments.
Alderman from the 13th, you recognize on the first reading of resolution 195.
Yes, President and members of the board, I ask for approval of Resolution 195.
Unanimous consent.
Unanimous consent, please.
Hearing no objection, please proceed, Alderman.
I renew my motion.
Now make a motion for adoption.
I make a motion that we adopt Resolution 195.
It's been moved by Alderman from the 13th, seconded by Alderman from the 22nd, that we adopt Resolution 195. Any further discussion? It's been moved and seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries.
Resolution 197, sponsored by Alderman Vocoro Employee Cannabis Oil Use.
Alderman from the 23rd, you recognize on the first reading of resolution 197.
So I want to explain what that is and I would ask that it would be sent to public employees, but I have already received a call and it happens to be a fireman. He wasn't smoking marijuana, but he's using it, was it CBG or CD, anyway, the cannabis oil, whatever that is. I don't use it. And he did test positive and it says on that use, they can't guarantee you wouldn't test positive. He is most likely going to lose his job today. But I do think we really need to get this in the public employees. I think that it needs to be discussed. How do we handle medical marijuana? You know, whether it requires you let your boss know or your department know ahead of time or you have a doctor's excuse. This is just to start the talk as to how we handle employees that test positive for, in this case, marijuana or something along those lines. I would, unless that's the wrong place to send it, I do think public employees would be the place to start having this discussion.
All right. Would you like to make a motion to officially send it to public employees?
Well, yes, I would like to make a motion.
It's been moved by Alderman from the 23rd, seconded by Alderman from the 1st, that we send Resolution 197 to public employees. Any further discussion? It's been moved and seconded. Yeah, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye. Pose, motion carries.
That is the extent of first reading of resolution.
Second reading.
Resolution 171, sponsored by Alderwoman Middlebrook Weathers Holding LLC in the city of St. Louis Enhanced Enterprise Zone.
Alderman from the 22nd, you recognize on the second reading of resolution 171.
Yes, Mr. President, at the request of a sponsor, I'd like to move for adoption of Resolution 171.
Moved by Alderman from the 22nd, entertain a second on that motion. Seconded by Alderman from the 10th, any further discussion? Alderman from the 22nd, you recognize to close.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the board, this is a simple tax abatement bill, ten years tax abatement at 95% for a new business to move in the second ward, creating nine jobs and adding additional five jobs. So total 14 new jobs for the city of St. Louis.
All right, thanks. It's been moved and seconded by Alderman from the 22nd, seconded by Alderman from the 10th, that we adopt Resolution 171. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries.
Resolution 178, sponsored by Alderwoman Hubbard Authorizing the Provisions of a Project Exemption Certificate in Connection with the Plan for Industrial Development for Square Inc.
Alderman from the 5th, you recognize on the second reading of resolution 178.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I move for adoption of Resolution 178.
Moved by Alderman from the 5th, seconded by Alderman from the 22nd. Any discussion? Any further discussion? Alderman from the 5th, you recognize the closed on Resolution 178.
I'd like to renew my motion.
It's been moved by Alderman from the 5th, seconded by Alderman from the 22nd, that we adopt Resolution 178. All in favor signify by saying aye. Pose, motion carries.
That is the extent of second reading resolution.
Ms. Lance, unfinished business.
We have none.
Announcements.
We have none.
Any further announcements? Alderman from the 3rd.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. There's an event tomorrow called Jump Shots of Gunshots with the KSTL Foundation at Vaishion High School from 2:00 to 4:00. Well, there will be a basketball game with some of the politicians in the city against the media. Heard they've been talking a lot of stuff. Just want to throw that out there. So if anybody would like to join in that game tomorrow, we officially start at 3:15. Also, the police will be playing against the firefighters also. So once again, this event is just about trying to bring some awareness to the violence in the city and bring resources to those individuals who need it and could use it. So be a fun time. Once again, if you all want to make it out, we are going to be hooping against some of the people from Realist, not Realist STL News, I'm sorry, from our STL News team. So, yeah, yeah, I heard Andre been talking, just saying. All right. So also, we have our annual Third Ward Christmas Party tomorrow that also is from 12:00 to 4:00. So if anybody want to come out and draw a ticket to give a kid a bike, you're more than welcome to do so. So, thank you. See you all tomorrow, hopefully.
Alderman from the 10th.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Tomorrow is Christmas on the Hill. Please come down starting from noon till 5:00. We have a petting zoo. We have a reindeer. We have carriage rides, naturally food, beverage. There'll be a shopping market set up in the parking lot at St. Ambrose School and Church. So come on down if you have nothing else to do tomorrow. Thank you.
Alderman from the 23rd.
I just wanted to address, I know a couple people have asked, "How come Greg has the right to sit by me over here?" I did clear that through the President of the Board and the Clerk. I do have an issue with balance if nobody else has noticed, sometimes worse, sometimes better. And it's just an insurance because he also helps me a lot of other ways. If you've seen him out with me at parties, when I get angered, which I seem to do a lot more lately, it tends to bring on from stress that problem. So for right now, I'm more comfortable having Greg there, but I know the questions come up. I do have the doctor, I have the President of the Board. So I did not just randomly decide to have Greg sit with me and maybe six months from now, that might change, but right now, it's just kind of where it's at. So I want everybody to understand that.
All right, thank you. Any further announcements? Any further announcements? Alderman from the 22nd.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the board, I'd like to announce the 22nd Ward Holiday Celebration on Monday, December 16th at the Omega Center, 3900 Goodfellow, from 6:00 PM to 7:30 PM. Also, announcement on behalf of the 2nd Ward Alderwoman, their Christmas party is going to be December 18th from 11:00 AM to 1:00 PM at Our Lady of the Holy Cross Catholic Church in their cafeteria at 8115 Church Road. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Alderman from the 5th.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I would just like to invite everyone out on December 20th at Car Square Tenant Management Corporation, myself and my mother, committee woman of the 5th Ward. We'll be having our annual 5th Ward Christmas Party. It's a grand old time. If you've ever been there before, everybody is welcome. We give away toys to the kids. We have good food, good beverages, and it starts, I believe, at 5:00 PM. That's Friday, December 20th in Car Square Neighborhood, Car Square Community Center, 1629 Biddle. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any further announcements? Any further announcements? Alderman from the 22nd, you recognize on the motion to excuse.
Mr. President, members of the board, I move to excuse the following Aldermen and Alderwomen due to necessary absence, the 2nd, the 8th, the 11th, 14th and 27th.
It's been moved by Alderman from the 22nd, entertain a second on that motion. Seconded by Alderman from the 22nd. I know it's been a long day, but we're almost done. Seconded by Alderman from the 15th. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. Alderman from the 22nd, you recognize on the motion to adjourn.
Mr. President, as a point of order, can I extend the motion to adjourn to March instead of January?
Make it till this time next year if you'd like.
I'd like to move...
And it's a non-debatable motion, by the way, so you may want to rethink that.
Okay, I'd like to move to adjourn until a jammer, the 10th, 2020.
Moved by Alderman from the 22nd, entertain a second on that motion. Seconded by Alderman from the 10th, all in favor signify by saying aye. Pose. Stand adjourned.